To start the council meeting for January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. First order of business is normally it's a pledge to the flag. Well, yeah, we're gonna add that in. All right. So let's did a flag.
On the second page.
Oh, sorry. Got it. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Holland.
Here.
Councilmember DeGolia.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hawkins-Manwellian.
Here.
And Mayor Whitmer.
Here.
Thank you.
Hey, um, first order of business is, uh, right now is the public comments. So these public comments. Public comments are going to be held to. There's a lot of people here, so two and a half minutes. And Anthony will let you know where the time is and, um, you, for, for this first public comments is for items that are not on the agenda. If you have a comment about something that is on the agenda, such as the housing element or something, please hold it until we discuss it, okay? So are there any public comments for items that are not on this agenda?
And I see one online. And none in the room. So if you've handed one of these public comment cards, I'm going to take a look at the messages on them, but I'm going to assume that they're for something that's not on the agenda, or excuse me, an item that's on the agenda, correct? Thank you.
Okay, we have one, one public comment that I can see here.
So Maris Ota is the only person I see online, Mayor. You have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor Whitmer and council members. My name is Maris Ota, and I'm joining you tonight as president of the Board of Directors for Hip Housing, an affordable housing nonprofit operating throughout San Mateo County. This will be a fun one, I'm pro- I promise. For over fifty years, Hip Housing has invested in human potential by improving the housing and lives of people in our community. And on behalf of Hip Housing, we want to thank you, the city council, for and the town of Atherton for your enduring support of our organization and affordable housing solutions in general. As a symbol of our appreciation for your partnership, we have previously dropped off and are presenting to you this evening the Hip Housing two thousand and twenty-three calendar. The calendar features art from twelve young artists throughout San Mateo County. Each month showcases a drawing of home along with that artist's quote in response to the question, what does home mean to you? For example, one of my favorite ones is the month of August, featuring the art by Luo Yan L, a fifth grader from Foster City. The accompanying quote is, "Home is a place that united people of all different races, genders, and ages. Home ensures peace and equality for all beings. Earth is everyone's shared home." We are so proud to work throughout San Mateo County as the organization of Hip Housing and in the town of Atherton to create affordable housing solutions for low-income families and individuals. Each year, we house, we house over twelve hundred people, and our programs serve over thirty-two hundred people, thanks to our strong partnerships with local governments such as yours. We hope that our calendar spurs you to think about the importance of a safe and stable home and that it resonates with you as, as an individual. Please feel free to spread the word about Hip Housing and to chat to me with any questions that you may have about affordable housing programs through Hip Housing. Thanks for your time.
Problem. Thank you. Are there any questions?
We're getting feedback.
Nope, I don't see any questions. Okay, fine. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming. Thanks for the calendars. We got them last year. They were great.
They're lovely. Very nice.
All right, uh, next thing is the departmental written reports. Has everybody looked at those and or discussed those things with Ri- with George? And if there's any further questions on it, please go ahead and ask them or make comments on them.
I think they were very well made. Very well put together.
All right, good.
Thank you.
All right. With that.
And then we should ask for a public comment on, on that item, Mayor Whitmer.
Does anybody in the audience or online want to make a comment on Mr. Roderick's departmental written reports? Which includes where we are with housing permits, police report, et cetera. Okay, I don't see any, so that will move on. This is approved. Report out of closed session. So we did have a closed session and our attorney Mona will make a comment on that.
Thank you. Um, we did meet, uh, to discuss labor negotiations, uh, tonight regarding Atherton Police Officers Association. There was no public comment in advance of adjourning into closed session. The council confirmed that the town's agency representatives will be comprised of George Rodericks, Anthony Super, and Mark Wilson, and that's our report.
Thank you. Okay. Um, the next one is the, uh, the, the consent calendar, which goes from item number one that's on the, in the staff report to item number six. Does anybody wish to pull any of those items on the council? Okay. Does anybody in the audience wish to pull to discuss any of the items that are on the, on the, uh, consent calendar? Move approval.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now we go to the public hearing. The first public hearing is number seven. It's the introduction of the first reading and way of future readings to amend Title Nine of the Atherton Municipal Code to adopt chapter nine point eighteen related to targeted residential picketing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is a public hearing. As, uh, as I mentioned, I'm going to open this item up and then turn it over to the police chief and the city attorney. The staff report advises that this involves, that the origin of this involves a dispute between the property owner on Carolina and a former business partner. That's incorrect. It's actually a dispute between a family member of that property owner uh, and the family member's former business partner, uh, so that there's no relation to uh, the incident being driven by that particular property owner. Uh, with that, I'm going to turn it over to the police chief to introduce the ordinance, uh, and then the city attorney to provide any additional information that the council may, may need. Chief?
Just make sure the mic's on, chief.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
And, and as you're aware, the history as George iterated, the reason or the purpose for the ordinance, it will provide us a tool, uh, to deal with these type of protests. In my tenure in the last six years, uh, this is only the second time we've had a protest in town. Both fortunately, uh, have been planned, and there was good communication with the police department as to the protests to make sure that everyone is safe. Uh, this recent one in the latter part of November and December was extended. It's the first time we've experienced that for four weeks. It did require the resident to leave his property with his small children for his safety, and I think some of the comments that were made as they were passing, you know, I would probably do the same thing, not feeling safe in my own home. So without this ordinance, our tools are limited. Uh, we wouldn't have the ability to possibly require a permit and provide safe haven, but it would still allow them to be in close proximity if we're in front of a residence. So I, I do know that there's a fine line in balancing free speech, but I also believe our residents have the right, just like we all do, to be safe in our own homes and our families, uh, and this gives us that tool. Um, and I think we hope that it won't happen in the future, but if it does, it provides us a tool. Um, we've been fortunate that protesters have communicated, which in my experience they typically do. They want to do the right thing. Um, when we have political visitors, sometimes those are spur of the moment and unplanned. But this tool, uh, would allow to set some real rigid guidelines for the protesters, and I think would truly mitigate uh, what, what occurred in our town, uh, in November and December.
Okay. Are there any questions for the chief?
I just have one.
Yeah.
Um, chief, um, the ordinance says that it's going to move them three hundred, keep them three hundred yards away, a feet.
From the target.
Yes. Does that not push them to someone else's property in a sense?
That's that, and it is sort of like squeezing the balloon, but three hundred feet away is a good distance, a football field length. And it puts them in front of a residence that they're not interested in, and so I think the assumption is they're going to be frustrated or not happy with their ability, and hopefully that we can work with them and find other safe haven for them to protest. It's difficult in our town because the uniqueness of not having sidewalks, somewhat narrow roads, so wherever we place them, they typically would be in the right of way of the roadway, and you know, our concern is safety for residents, traffic moving by, and for the protests. So I think the intent of the ordinance is to basically take the wind out of their sail, move them, and hopefully move them somewhere else.
I have a question as well. How are we defining the residence? Because some of our properties are quite large. Is it like the property line or the actual home?
It would be the property line in front of the home that fronts, you know, the street from our jurisdiction, and have to be three hundred feet from there.
Okay.
Have a question.
Go.
Do we already have laws that prohibit people from blocking someone's driveway or blocking them from going in and out of their property? Do those exist somewhere else in our laws?
Well, they do, because you can't block public street. You can't block access to a residence. Uh, there were some concerns about traffic in and out monitoring this residence. We can't really prohibit that because it's not illegal to drive up and down the street and run about, but we do have the ability to uh, remove people that are blocking their road or blocking residence.
So that's not explicitly in this ordinance, but it is somewhere else, so that's already not allowed, correct?
And this ordinance, uh, through the city attorney, uh, was replicated from other jurisdictions and it survived some pretty stern legal challenges, so we're comfortable, uh, in pushing this ordinance forward. And again, I don't think that we're going to utilize it much, but it just gives us one more tool, and I think something that we can help prevent, uh, when protesters do reach out and meet, and we can tell them this is how it's going to work, or it's not going to work.
So chief, was there, was there any violence there and were you called out to move people from in front of the driveway?
We were called out a few times. Again, uh, we had good communication with the organizer. Unfortunately, he wasn't always truthful, uh, which is not surprising. Um, and it's interesting to note that these protesters were not your typical protester. They were hired um, by the person involved in the action to come out. They were paid, I think, two hundred dollars a day to come out, uh, and they were there eight hours a day, and so they did at times block the driveway, uh, yell obscenities, do other things, and so we would have to be called out, uh, to marshal that.
Okay. Any other questions from the council?
Um, my understanding is that the, uh, proposed ordinance is modeled after a San Jose ordinance that's on the books. Is that accurate?
I can respond to that. That is correct. Um, San Jose was the first jurisdiction and one of the very few who drafted narrowly tailored ordinances that balanced First Amendment rights against protecting private property owner interests, and this has survived judicial scrutiny, which is why we have modeled, um, the draft ordinance before you after that.
I see.
Yeah, I see. So.
Okay, good.
All right, there are two on, online public comments that have had their hand up. Why don't we do those before we take any from the, from the audience here?
Hi.
Carolina resident.
Yes, thank you, thank you. I appreciate, uh, the opportunity to speak. I, uh, also appreciate what's already been, uh, sort of put forth, uh, you know, in trying to address this issue. Uh, I wanted to just give a little bit of color because we are kind of the victims of what's been going on i- in, in the last two months or so. Um, and I thought that color could be helpful, and then I want to talk about, uh, the ordinance itself and a few issues. Um, so until very recently, my wife and I, we, we lived in Atherton peacefully, happily, uh, you know, six and a half years. Uh, I, I run investment partnership. Our clients are mainly foundations and nonprofits, and my wife is a graduate student here, uh, at Stanford. We have very young children, ages four and one. Uh, in mid-November, uh, of last year, uh, someone who we do not know, we have never spoken to, who we had never even heard of, uh, sent more than twenty people, uh, to our home, uh, to basically intimidate, threaten, demean, and harass us. Uh, and these people came every single day, including weekends and holidays, uh, for weeks on end. Uh, on Thanksgiving Day in particular, uh, they were in front of our home for more than eight hours straight. Uh, and we later found out that this was solely because we are the children and extended family of somebody else who is involved in a court case. And so what this was essentially was a brutal form of witness intimidation mafia style, coming after innocent women and children. So I just want to be very clear on this. To me, this has very little to do with a legitimate protest. I am all for the right to protest and for the freedom of speech. These are people who are paid, as the chief men- mentioned, to threaten and intimidate completely innocent families. The person who's ultimately behind this harassment has an Interpol red notice out for his arrest, and he has done this to twenty or thirty innocent families across the country, of which many cases have ended in violence. We currently have a restraining order and injunction against the individual perpetuating this harassment, and all of those involved with him, and he has been found in contempt of court. But because there has been no real enforcement or punishment for this, we've had to vacate our home to prevent these, these very unhinged people, uh, from, from encountering our young children who, who wouldn't be able to understand this. So I just think it's, it's really important to realize that the person who's doing this can literally do this to any resident of Atherton. Any one of us, as the law currently stands. I mean, these folks have, you know, they've made YouTube videos threatening my four-year-old son. Uh, you know, they've doxed us online, exposed all of our personal information, our home addresses, et cetera, online, and encouraged their unhinged followers to come to our home to threaten us. Uh, so basically, with regards to the ordinance, I think the, the really important thing here is that as it currently is written, it allows us to pursue private action against these individuals, which of course we're doing, you know, with restraining orders and things like that. And then the penalty right now, as it stands, is a one thousand dollar fine. What I can tell you is that from what we've learned about these individuals and their backing, they will be happy to pay that fine and continue the harassment, and they've done that already in other towns. What I think we need is an even more punitive result of this harassment. For example, in Los Angeles County, targeted picketing can be charged as a misdemeanor punishable with up to six months imprisonment. So the last thing I want to say is that, you know, we basically, you know, need some sort of process in this town that distinguishes legitimate protests from this form of witness intimidation. Uh, if, if we have this, uh, you know, as it currently stands, we push them out three hundred feet, they will stand on the corner of Stockbridge and Carolina and continue the daily harassment. Uh, these people have the worst of intentions and will find loopholes to exploit, uh, to further their only goal, which is the harassment of innocent families for the purposes of witness intimidation.
Sir, I want to be respectful of your comments, but you have about thirty seconds left.
Yeah, I, I'm basically done. I, I just, you know, I thought it'd be helpful for everyone to hear from me directly because my young children and I, we have not been able to return to our family home of the last almost seven years, uh, for the last two or three months because this brutal witness intimidation has been cloaked as a protest, and that the key here really is how will we enforce this? And a fine or moving them three hundred feet will not stop them from, from damaging the quality of life of basically any Atherton resident they would choose to do so. That's all I have to say. Thank you. Thank you very much for your time. Of course, I'm happy to answer any questions, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, um, pleasure of the mayor, we have, uh, Seebolt, Carolina Lane, Lane resident.
Thank you very much. I spoke at the last meeting. I live, uh, next to the, to, uh, the people who are most directly impacted by the protesters. The protesters were also in front of our driveway and in front of our house, so to be clear, this did not simply impact our, uh, our family next door that was forced to move out. Look, with respect to the ordinance, I appreciate the, the, the initial attempt, but I'm going to ask you to sort of reexamine what you've written. For any ordinance to have, uh, impact, it's got to have teeth. Uh, the fine needs to be big enough, and the legal action against the individuals needs to be significant enough to effectively deter the action. Furthermore, if the city is going to create an ordinance, I expect my city to defend me and enforce the ordinance. It should not be on me or my next-door neighbor to take an individual action against somebody who's violated a city ordinance. If somebody speeds in front of my house, the police don't say, well, it's your job to go after the person who's gone speeding in front of your house. If the people behind me decide to, uh, build a guest house that doesn't respect property boundaries, it's the city that goes after that person, not me. In the same vein, I think it's the city's responsibility to enforce this and not put the responsibility on the individual homeowner or homeowners to take action against these people who are violating it. Thank you.
Next, we have Ruth House, House, Housenbold.
Uh, yes, so I am also, um, a resident in the cul-de-sac where the protests were taking place, and a lot of what I have to say is in support of, of what's been said. Um, just to reiterate, it was very disconcerting to come home, uh, and have to explain to my children what was going on in, um, in our cul-de-sac in front of our home. Our driveway was occasionally blocked, but what was even more disconcerting is that there were videos daily of, um, of these protests that were published online that also showed our residents and our, um, in our address, which, uh, was very disconcerting, especially given the parties that were involved. So I would encourage a, and uh, a strengthening of the ordinance to try to tease out what is truly, um, the freedom of speech that we want to protect in, in our, in our country and the democracy that it was, you know, meant to support, and something that is targeted bullying and, um, and quite unjust and, and unfair to many of the residents in the area, not just, uh, not just those targeted. And by pushing them three hundred feet, it would just push them to the side in front of our driveway or to the side in front of the, uh, the Seebolts driveway, which, um, it, it doesn't alleviate the concerns or, um, or the worry that, uh, you know, something was going to, uh, something bad was going to happen right in front of our family home. But I do, I do want to also say that I appreciate your attention on this. I appreciate your, your concern and energy around finding the right solution to protect all the residents of Atherton in a, in a universal way.
Okay, thank you. No other comments?
There's no one else online.
Right? Anybody here? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the town council, Mr. Rodericks. Thank you, Mr. Rodericks, for the, uh, correction of the record with respect to the resident, who, as you heard from him himself, has no relationship whatsoever with the individual responsible for the harassment. Um, let me follow up on some of the points that have been made, because I think you've heard some concrete proposals, and I'm happy to follow up with your city attorney more offline, but there, there, um, there are three things that this ordinance needs in addition to what you currently have. First, you need to give your chief the authority to disperse anyone who persistently violates this ordinance. Um, there's a Los Angeles ordinance, which I have copies of, and with your permission, I'll give copies to Mr. Roderick's. Take a look at that. Um, it, like the San Jose ordinance, has survived constitutional challenge, and it specifically gives the chief the authority he needs to keep the peace and preserve public safety in your town. That's number one, dispersal authority. Number two, there needs to be a misdemeanor penalty provision that at the, you know, a discretion of the police and the district attorney can be charged in extreme situations. I think you've heard from the residents eloquently, it should not be up to them to pursue a private cause of action to enforce the ordinance that this town has put in place to preserve um, the safety of its residents. And then finally, and I know my time is short, so I'm talking quickly, but trying to respect your time as well. We recommend that you have a permitting requirement for this kind of process activity. Permitting doesn't restrict free speech. It simply gives notice to the residents and to your law enforcement, so that everybody can make sure that you have public safety and free expression of ideas at the same time. Your chief needs a heads up. He needs to know, or she, it sometime may need to know if additional resources are necessary to, you know, keep folks safe in the event that there's going to be protests. So again, just to recap, dispersal authority for your chief, misdemeanor provision, and permitting requirements as appropriate under the law. Um, so thank you very much, and again, thank you for correcting the record on, uh, with respect to the resident and his lack of any relationship. Happy to answer any questions, but also know you have a busy agenda and happy to follow up offline with, um, you and your staff.
Thanks. Hey, are there any other public comments here in the room? Or anybody else that's popped up online? For this item?
There's no one else online, Mayor.
Okay, then we'll close public comments and bring it back to the council for discussion.
Uh, personally, I think that, um, you know, with the ordinance that was presented to us, it did seem like it covered a lot of the bases, and it has been used in other jurisdictions. However, um, I think some of the residents bring up some good points that we should maybe consider, um, that will maybe give it a little bit more teeth, um, and more penalty, because we don't want this happening. Uh, for instance, I, I really didn't realize that they didn't have to get a permit to gather and collect and picket like that in, in front of people's houses, and that could be, you know, a, a big deterrent. If you have to come in and file for a, uh, picketing permit or an assembly permit or something like that, uh, the misdemeanor, I, so I'd like to just open it up to other council members for their thoughts too, because I do believe that this is the first, uh, baby steps that, you know, we really need to try to protect our residents in a, in a big way, while protecting the right for public speech, for public, uh, expression of viewpoints, but not harassment.
What do you else have a comment?
I have, I have a question. One of, I mean, this situation's really unique in, for that resident in that it's witness tampering and paid ticket, picketers. I'm wondering what would be the process to differentiate types of picketing legally, or like the police, would that be at the discretion of the police? I'm sure that we have to protect First Amendment rights. I'm guessing there are a lot of hoops to jump through for that, and I have no idea what that process would look like.
The city attorney does have her, uh, hand up if the council wants input from legal staff.
Good. Mona.
Yes. Uh, just, just to respond to a couple of concerns that were raised. So I think there's a misunderstanding that the ordinance only allows for a private cause of action. That's not correct. The ordinance also allows a private cause of action. However, uh, violations of the municipal code are subject to Chapter eight point twenty of Atherton Municipal Code, which is basically our nuisance abatement code, and we are able to abate violations of the picketing ordinance through that, which we would and could do upon proceeding notice of it. So that's the first thing. Um, whether we should, um, consider requiring a permit, I don't recommend that at all. Um, that's considered a prior restraint on free speech, and when you read the line of cases that analyze First Amendment protected activities against anything that infringes those rights, the courts largely lean to the narrowest possible regulation to allow free speech while maintaining very specific articulated, um, concerns that a legislative body has. Um, in this case, and anytime you, you have a permit in advance of free speech, it's considered something called a prior restraint. Um, the, the town code already requires permits for things that are, um, considered to be special events or that would generate people in excess of a certain amount. So in some respects, it is addressed, um, the, the permitting process, but it's but we, I don't recommend having a blanket rule of, uh, requiring a permit in advance of, uh, allowing picketing to happen. Um, and then finally, again, reading the cases that describe this, um, the courts really want to make sure, and, and almost all of the, the cases start out with a sentence or two, reaffirming the, the public's right to free speech and assembly. Those are kind of seminal in the Constitution. Um, but that doesn't mean that the council can't consider, um, making violations of the ordinance a misdemeanor that is within your purview, and we could um, revise the ordinance to reflect that.
Okay.
Great, thanks.
Can, can you address the last one? He was talking about the police chief's ability to disperse the crowd?
Yes, I think, I think that is something that you could consider doing. Um, the reality is, it becomes, um, a difficult situation to make that determination. Um, when you're at the location, trying to immediately determine, are you within three hundred feet of the residence that's complaining or Or are you three hundred feet of the neighbor of the resident that is complaining? And how are you violating it? Let me make sure that you disperse it. So it's possible. I would defer to the chief if he thinks that that's necessary. My understanding, again, in speaking with the chief while we were drafting this ordinance, is that um, this is an isolated incident, and the town has not had a history of these kinds of things. And so I don't know if you want to be writing um, language in an ordinance to address something that hopefully would never come up, but might put your police chief or your police officers in a situation where they now have to exercise discretion that they might not otherwise be comfortable doing.
Through the, through the mayor, though, the, and city attorney and police chief. The police do have the ability to, uh, if, if the protesters are becoming unruly, becoming, or, or representing an unsafe condition on the roadway, preventing emergency access of vehicles, preventing a property owner from going down their own personal driveway to move them from those locations already under current law.
Correct.
Good.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, may I have thirty seconds to respond to city attorney's comments, please? I'll be very quick.
Uh, I, I just would like to suggest that you contact her directly, because we're, we're, we got a lot of people here, and we said that we were only gonna take one, one public comment from people, okay?
Bill.
I understand, Mr. Mayor, I don't have this.
I have a comment.
Okay.
But, I mean, this is a desperate situation. I'm asking for thirty seconds.
Uh, I, I really recommend that first you talk to Mona, you know, directly, and we go from there, okay?
Okay, well, Mona, my name is Jeff Rapkin. I'm an attorney with the firm of Jones Day. I'll try to find your information. I cannot unfortunately see your name. Okay, thank you, thank you.
All right, no problem. Rick, do you have a comment?
Uh, yeah, so I understand from Mona's comments that I, I don't have the full uh, proposed ordinance as part of my packet, and mine stops with the beginning of the severability clause, so I don't read the whole thing, but from Mona, one, one of the questions I had is it's clear that the proposed ordinance pro, gives a private right of action to the party that uh, is aggrieved. Uh, but it, it's not clear that uh, the police can disperse the crowd or move them back to the three hundred foot limit. But I assume, since that's an ordinance that we would be passing, that they can do that. And, and from what I understood, Mona to say she concurred with that.
Um, yes.
We, we recently um, uh, did, had quite a bit of consideration of amending our noise ordinance. And one of the reasons that we chose to make an amendment to the noise ordinance was because uh, that ordinance uh, just provided an infraction. And if somebody committed an infraction, then they would be fined the amount uh, that's associated with that infraction, but you couldn't do it more than once uh, at that time, which we thought was a problem, and we amended that ordinance to include the ability of the police in their discretion to uh, uh, use the option of an infraction or a misdemeanor. And the benefit, as I understood it in that case, was that that option of the misdemeanor meant that the, the uh, charge that was associated with the infraction could be done if the uh, problem wasn't uh, ended within fifteen minutes, they could get a penalty. Again, that makes that penalty much more severe. Uh, and I, I don't know that that would be a problem in this case, but that seems like a wise thing to do. Uh, so um, I would support amending this proposal to include that option. I don't think we need uh, anything else. I, I, I wanna keep it as close to what San Jose did and has been approved as possible. I don't think any of us want to infringe on first amendment rights, but I think we wanna protect our residents.
So, so you're saying add referral to the noise ordinance?
Yeah, the, the kind of thing we did there with the misdemeanor.
The same language. So we, we, we had, we used some language that made it a misdemeanor.
Yeah.
So you could use that same language here. Mona, does that work for you?
Right. My direction would be to add a section that would say that violations of this ordinance may be subject to a misdemeanor. I can do that.
Okay. Um, so, you know, I've looked at this, and even it came up in the public comments by some neighbors. You know, they don't want this to be moved down to their property. So that, that is a concern that we're moving something down. At the same time, um, you know, I can understand the, the resident, uh, you know, asking for some relief uh, from a, a crowd that's, doesn't seem to be protesting in a very congenial way, especially when it involves children. So, um, so we can decide to go vote on that as you'd like. Okay, would anybody like to make a?
So, I, I guess.
You got another comment?
No, I, I could make a motion if we wanna make a motion for this um, ordinance that we uh, introduced for the first reading and waive future readings of an ordinance of the Atherton Municipal Code, chapter nine point one eight, related to targeted residual, residential picketing with, as um, presented, but with the addition of the misdemeanor clause that um, city attorney uh, read. Uh, and um, I think that was the only change, because the other two we're not gonna be able to do.
Yeah, and I, you know, I'd like to just say that, yeah, if, if your discussion with Mona causes her to agree to make changes, we can amend it at the second reading, okay? So it's not like it's a dead subject. You brought up some very pertinent points. But I, I just want you to talk to, to Mona about it, because we've got some pretty clear directions from the city attorney on this.
So, Mr. Mayor, I think that I've, I've waived the future readings of this ordinance.
Oh, yeah, yeah, waive the future readings of the ordinance here to, to the crowd, yes.
Okay.
You got a second, right?
Yeah.
Okay, you wanna take a vote or a roll call vote? What do you wanna do?
We can do a roll call.
Okay.
Councilmember Holland?
Yes.
Councilmember DeGoya?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hawkins-Mellon?
Yes.
And Mayor Whitmer.
Yes. That passes. Okay, the next one is item number ten, which is approval of a proposal for the amendment of our green uh, green zone.
Um, you got eight.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Adoption of an ordinance to amend chapter fifteen dot nine of the municipal code for green building codes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is also a public hearing. And this origi, as you know, you adopted reach codes the end of last year. Uh, and as they affected accessory dwelling units, there was a comment afterwards that, you know, hey, this doesn't quite mesh with the town's uh, housing element where we're encouraging the development of accessory dwelling units. So is there an ability to amend the ordinance uh, to give an exception to new accessory dwelling units that are added on to an existing single-family home? Not new construction of a total lot, but added to an existing single-family home that allows them to use gas as opposed to being all-electric. Uh, so that's what this amendment pertains to. The ordinance would be, if the council adopts it this evening, or introduces it this evening, introduced tonight, uh, adopted in February, effective thirty days later. So, uh, it wouldn't take effect until March fifteenth. And it's proposed to extend that exception all the way through a building permit obtained on December thirty first. The, the concern uh, that staff has is the reach code ordinance, as it sits right now, is already effective. Is that correct, Mike? Uh, so right now, those ADUs, if someone comes in and gets a permit, are required to be all-electric. And so they're also required to be all-electric all the way up until March fifteenth. And if someone comes in after March fifteenth, then they could get one with a gas exception, and they can only do that until the end of this year. So there might be some contractor, builder, homeowner confusion in the implementation of it. That is a concern, but that's what the ordinance is before you this evening.
Okay, great. Thank you. Are there any questions for George on this item? Seeing none, uh, are there any public comments on this?
I have none online.
Online, nothing online. Okay, let's bring it back to the council. Any final comments from a council member or a suggestion on a uh, a vote?
I have a question actually for George. So it, it comes into effect March fifteenth. So what do you have to have in your hand to get this exception? Because it's a very short windows from March to the center mark. So it's only a few months. So you would have to rush in. What do you have to have in hand to even get this? Would you have to have a full-on permit already issued?
So this only applies to the building permit issue. It's not the planning and review and, and entitlement process, just the building permit. So someone could be in the, you know, plan, check, or review process for their home with an ADU right now under planning, but not actually pull their building permit until after March fifteenth, at which time they could have the exception. Uh, but if they pulled it beforehand, the building permit, not planning permit, then it would not apply to them.
So anyone who's already pulled theirs would not be able to do it. Anyone who's about to can just say, okay, then I'll wait till March?
Correct.
And then how long does it take to get that permit? Is that something like, if we announce today we're gonna do this, does it take seven months to get it?
A, a, a permit for ADU?
Building permit for an ADU.
It, it kinda depends. So the, the typical building permit process for an ADU is rather quick. And they turn around. But it depends on what the property owner is proposing. So if they are proposing just an ADU and then a remodel of a kitchen as well, and they're also looking at putting that ADU in a setback or in the TPZ zone or some other issue, it's gonna take a little longer with comments. But if it's a clean, you know, drop-in ADU, that's not in any setbacks, that's not in a TPZ zone, that doesn't affect floor area or anything like that, it's a relatively quick turnaround.
Rick?
Uh, it's, yeah, just further clarification on that point. My understanding is, basically, right now, if someone has a guest house or a pool house that is not a qualified ADU, and they wanna make, they wanna change it to be an ADU, it doesn't have to be all-electric.
Correct.
But if someone wants to build an entirely separate accessory dwelling unit that not mo, remodeled something that already exists, then um, with this amendment, they, it could be either gas or electric, so long as they apply for the building permit between March fifteenth and December thirty first, is that right?
Correct. They pull the building permit.
So they, so they have to get, they have to pull the building permit, which means they file an application essentially. Uh, they don't have to have completed the work or anything like that. They just have, so, so basically, the purpose of this is to let residents who currently might want to build an ADU, because they know that one of the things we're trying to do in our housing element is encourage ADUs, so we don't have to build additional multifamily housing units. Um, this would qualify those units. It, if, for example, uh, an existing homeowner wanted to build an ADU, but they had a relatively uh, not, not a, a modern electrical panel, that if they were to build an all-electric ADU, they might have to upgrade. In this case, as long as they were to apply between March fifteenth and December thirty first, they might be able to avoid that electrical panel upgrade and, and build an ADU that would help us under our housing element. Is that right?
Yes, but they would have to run gas, so there might be a trade-off cost there.
So.
I have a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
I think, excuse me. I, the premise of this ordinance assumes that the costs of doing a gas ADU is more, and that is not correct, as I understand it. Adding gas infrastructure costs money, doing trenching, all of that. Potentially, a panel might have to be upgraded, but there are tremendous rebates available to offset those costs, where it becomes equivalent, less nominal, where when you're building an ADU from scratch, the difference of a thousand dollars, two thousand dollars, six thousand dollars is kind of a drop in the bucket when you're building an ADU from scratch, from my perspective. I think this is um, you know, we shouldn't be investing in building new gas infrastructure at this point. And the other reason we had initially talked about not having gas infrastructure in ADUs is because the smaller residence, residences are more vulnerable to the air quality impacts of the methane gas appliances. They don't have as good of ventilation. There's a lot of research around the public health implications of methane in the home. And so to me, there's, there's no need for this, so.
Um, I, I believe we need to do whatever we can to get people to build ADUs and to rush them in as soon as we can, so that we show the progress on our housing element. And if this helps people to do something now versus wait a year or two, I'm all for it.
So, did the mayor have a comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. So um, I'm going to um, kinda restate what you started, what you started out saying, that the cost of um, bringing in electricity to a new ADU is probably less expensive than the cost of bringing gas to a new ADU.
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
And you're gonna be doing electricity anyway.
And they're gonna be doing electricity anyway. And if they have a one-twenty panel, like an older panel on the property now, they're gonna have to probably put a sub-panel for the new ADU anyway. And to upgrade that, that may be a couple thousand dollars, if that's. Or there are new technologies that I've been reading about that um, are available, that i, if you're gonna retrofit your existing home and take out your old gas stove and put a new electric in, you don't have to upgrade to two hundred amps, because there's new technology that um, let's see, what did, what did I write down here? Like new circuit sensors and smart current sensors that allows the users to switch between high-demand appliances when in use. So I think that the time is now, not in a year, not in two years, to start weaning us off of natural gas and installing more electric appliances. Um, backup generators for emergencies, such as we experienced on New Year's Eve, um, uh, are still, would still be permitted to run on fuel gas, but I really think that um, that the small window is not going to incentivize people to run out and build a new ADU and trench for gas lines and install natural gas to that new ADU for the small amount of appliances in uh, an eight-hundred-square-foot ADU.
Any other comments?
Uh, yeah, I, I, I think that it uh, is generally cheaper to put in electricity than to put in gas. Because when you have to put in gas, especially if you're building a new facility like this town center that we built, we didn't put in gas, because we didn't have to put in the infrastructure, and we save thou, tens of thousands of dollars by not putting in that infrastructure. The only issue here is, um, I know that there are, there's at least one resident who brought it up to me, that he would build an ADU, but it would cost him so much more to upgrade his electricity. It's not a couple thousand dollars, because he has to completely upgrade it with PG&E. It, 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 it's prohibitively expensive for him to do that, and he would build an ADU if he didn't have to do that. So I don't see why, you know, let the, let the resident make the decision. People are gonna choose what the cheapest way to do uh, a building project is. And um, I think residents can make that judgment if this is about increasing, even if it's just two or three units, the number of ADUs that we get built this year with, that we wouldn't otherwise get built. Uh, that's a benefit to us. That's absolutely a benefit to us.
Respectfully, Councilmember DeGoya, I understand that, that residents' hesitation of spending money to build a new ADU. I've heard that from other residents, that they don't wanna spend the money, because it's gonna increase their tax base, it's gonna do this and that. And so it's not just running electricity. because it's going to increase their tax base, it's going to do this and that, and so it's not just running electricity. It's the whole package, and if you're going to bite the bullet and build the ADU that we need people or want people to do, that's what it's going to cost, and the incremental cost is not that much.
Okay, any other comments? No, okay, uh, can I have a motion?
So move.
Oh, yeah, you got to open up for public.
Oh, I thought we had public.
No, not on this one yet.
Well, yeah, as we said, were there any online, but okay, public comments, fine.
Yeah, I'm Jeff Morris, fifty five, Elena, I'm familiar with the person that's offered to build an ADU. He's spoken to me, he's spoken to Rick. Um, he, it has nothing to do with money, it has to do with the ability to get the thing constructed. We need ADUs in town for our housing element, let's not throw up any unnecessary roadblocks, this, let's get the housing units built.
Okay.
Doesn't make sense.
My name's Lauren Gruner, and I work in, work with clients all the time who are putting together ADUs and so on, and I was just going to say that the the time is not just a few months and a few thousand dollars to get your electrical panel upgraded, sometimes you're waiting a year, sometimes you're waiting two years, I mean, PG&E takes a very long time to upgrade panels, so if you're truly trying to get a few more done this year, you may want to consider just allowing people to extend what they have. Also, you know, I mean, I know that that's sort of the future and everyone's saying to go everything all electric, but in honesty, I think that, you know, when you're taking some of these lots and really trying to just come up with the most creative way to do something in the quickest way, it's nice to leave the flexibility there, so that's just.
Thank you.
I just have a comment, but you still have to go through PG&E to get gas, is that correct?
It's not the same.
And there you have the gas, they don't have to get PG&E.
This is only a nine month issue, I mean, this is a very short time frame, that would only apply to people that would build an ADU if they didn't have to fully upgrade, and maybe there'll be nobody, maybe nobody will take advantage of it. But if there's anybody that takes advantage of it, it improves our situation by increasing the number of ADUs and showing the state that we're able to achieve what we're saying we're going to achieve.
Yeah, I think drawing the nexus from the your argument, it it it's a very faint line.
I don't think we should be. And I think the state has set some pretty real goals about decarbonizing our state, which will require these ADU developers ultimately to electrify their homes, we're trying to decarbonize everything. So yes, this might cost them time or money right now to electrify their homes, which again, there are very significant rebates available to offset those costs, including for panels. They won't have to then have to redo all of that fresh infrastructure when we are trying to hit our climate goals. So I don't think, I just don't think this is a big enough hurdle for people to build ADUs. I would happily talk to this resident to show him all the rebates, if you guys want to connect me to him. I don't, I just don't think, this isn't just nine months of development, this is gas infrastructure that will be in place and functional for twenty to thirty years. So I don't think we should be sacrificing our environmental and climate goals in favor of our housing goals, personally.
Well, I personally think it's it's a nine month issue, and there aren't going to be that many people that are going to take advantage of it, so I don't think it's going to impact the environment at all. But.
I have one more. There there's, they've given a lot of facts, there's a few that haven't been said so far, gas lines going back in the yard, we're in an earthquake zone. And the fire chief gave a talk the other day where he was talking about the biggest risks after after earthquakes or fires for these gas lines, so that's a safety issue. The second one is all the newest research in the last year has been showing how gas stoves are the number one cause for childhood asthma inside houses. And as Stacy pointed out, in a small house is even more so. So if we were going to do that, then maybe we should require better ventilation, so it's like a, there's other considerations. So I I think that what we're pushing again versus, and then the other question I asked George is how much of a hassle is it to make a little window of this special bargain? If I have someone's already pulled their permit and wouldn't, it seems unfair to them if we're going to allow that. So it it seems odd to do, open a small window, although I really appreciate us wanting to do everything we can to get the ADUs built, so I do appreciate the intention, I just feel like we're we're fighting miseducation. So the people that are saying I'm not doing it for money reasons, that doesn't seem to be right, so we need to educate people a bit more.
I mean, I just have, I have one more piece of information that there was an article in the San Francisco Chronicle today, and I don't know if you all read it, that the San Mateo County Bay Area Quality Management District, BAMQ, they are going to meet in March to approve what will be the country's, not the county's, most sweeping ban of natural gas, water heaters and furnaces. The ban would begin in twenty twenty seven for water heaters, gas water heaters, and in twenty twenty nine for furnaces. And that would be for all new construction and replacement appliances. So stay tuned for BAMQ, it's B A A Q U M D, it's the Bay Area Quality Management District Board of San Mateo County.
Or upgrade your appliances before that. And then another twenty years.
No, it's for new construction.
New construction.
It won't apply to Atherton, because we we already have a code in place that doesn't allow those to be put in place.
Yeah.
So it it won't be at all relevant to Atherton. I think this is a total red herring, the issue is, do you want to increase ADUs or don't you? And the only reason to support this is because you'll get a few additional ADUs. And if you don't want to support that, don't support it. But I would move that we approve it, because I think we need to approve all the ADUs we can.
I'll second that. Do we have a vote?
Yes, sir, Councilmember Holland.
No.
Councilmember DeGoya.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
No.
Vice Mayor Hawkins Ben Willian.
No.
And Mayor Winmer.
Yes, I think it made a bad decision, but there we go. Okay, uh, next we go to the regular agenda, and we're on item nine, consideration of an appointment to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you're here this evening to review one applicant for two vacant seats on Bike Ped Committee, and appointing them to the latest expiring term, which expires in June of twenty twenty six. And your applicant is Raymond Jubala, and I don't know if Raymond is here in the audience this evening, but.
Some join online, I think.
Online, you're welcome to ask him to speak or her to speak, so pleasure the council from here forward.
Well, why don't we ask him if he'd like to make a statement?
I read his.
Mr. Jubala, you have the floor.
Nice. Very detailed one, one of the best ones I've ever seen.
Thank you, um, am I audible?
Yes, we can hear you.
You're online.
Perfect, um, thank you, members of the council, um, I, my name is Raymond Jubala, and I am a student here at Menlo College, and I wanted to represent not just my college, but also people of the of the community in which who might not be represented, for example, those of the disabled community, as I am currently in a wheelchair, I believe I bring a different perspective to this committee. That would be beneficial for current and potentially future residents here in Atherton. Because the roads are the ones that bring that bring people in and through Atherton, and the more inclusive they are, the more they are able to serve these people. Thank you.
Any questions for the candidate? Uh, I've got one, um, so where are you at Menlo College, are you junior, senior, what? Hello, Raymond?
Let me give him a chance to unmute again.
Thank you, um, I guess I muted myself, um, I I am a senior, senior currently, and I am yeah, I'm living on on campus, but I am a senior, so, yes.
I realize you can't tell what the future is, but once, are you going to, you're going to graduate this year, I assume in the in the spring?
I sure hope so.
So hope so too, uh, question would be, um, so you're on this committee for a period of time, do you feel that you're going to be staying in the Atherton area? You have to stay in Atherton to be on the committee, well, you could be in an adjoining committee adjoining community, but that's that's as far as it goes.
Uh, yes, I actually live myself here in San Mateo County, so, um, so living on campus is simply a feel for independence, a feel for what it's like to live away from home more than anything, so, um, after I graduate from college, I will be living in Foster City and adjoining city, um, I do believe.
So that meets our requirement for an additional somebody from outside, right?
The requirement is at least one member should have knowledge of interest in countywide pedestrian and bicycle planning operations.
Okay, all right, great, problem, all right, thank you very much, thank you for applying.
Thank you.
And for a very complete application. All right, does anybody have any questions, Raymond, anybody? Any comments from the out in the public? Anybody online?
You want to make an announcement that we've got other vacancies?
Yeah, I will. Mr. Mayor, before you go on a little, before you go further, Mr. Mayor, just reading that qualifications fully, the BPAC is five appointed members and two non-voting liaisons, one member of the Transportation Committee, one member and one council member. At least three appointed members of the committee must meet the requirements of the MTC and live or work in the town of Atherton. Other members of the BPAC must be residents of the town, so two members must be residents of the town, the other three must either live or work in Atherton. So in order for this resident who's currently in Menlo College does live in town, but if he's in Foster City and no longer lives or works in town, he would no longer qualify under the committee standards.
Okay, so now you have your goal, Raymond.
Wait, let me ask a question. So is, since he's a student at Menlo College, so long as he is a student, that would qualify. Uh, we have two openings, one expires June twenty something of this year, and one expires in twenty twenty six, so it's reasonable we could appoint him to for the term that expires this year.
Correct, yeah, and if he gets a job in town or around town or something like that, then we can always, we can reappoint him. Okay.
I think we should make a motion to appoint him to the Bike Ped Committee for the short term. Expiring twenty, June thirty.
Okay, I second that, we have a vote on that?
Yes, Councilmember Holland.
Yes, welcome.
DeGoya.
Yeah.
Lewis.
Yes.
Vice Mayor.
Yes.
And there.
Okay, for me too.
Look forward to meeting you, Raymond.
All right, number ten, proposal of, uh, for the American Green Zone Alliance for a workshop for professionals transitioning to battery powered activities versus gas powered activities.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as you mentioned, this is a proposal for a workshop for professionals transitioning to electric for lawn care equipment, and this originated from a member of the EPC and then matriculated its way up through the EPC for a formal recommendation of the city council to conduct the workshop. Was a number of details and studies done by the EPC to reach out to the community to determine if there was interest. Staff member Rachel Lunders here to answer any specific questions the council may have, I'm just giving a broad overview, if you need further questions regarding the workshop, Rachel can assist.
Are there any questions?
I have a question, um, has one of our, because I'm a former EPC member, I was in that meeting, one of the questions was if the attendance is not deemed to be sufficient, is there a window in the contract where they could cancel and reschedule?
Sure, yeah, today's recommendation is to approve the proposal and allocate six thousand five hundred dollars for the workshop. And I spoke with Dan Mabe at the American Green Zone Alliance for the contract terms, and he expressed that we could host the training anytime from February twenty twenty three through March twenty twenty four. And we would put a deposit down and we could schedule it for any time in there, and if we needed to cancel, that would be no problem with him, as long as we rescheduled within that time period.
Okay.
Great, Elizabeth?
I have a question, are are we anticipating charging attendees any monetary amount to help defer the costs?
As designed right now, it'd be free to attendees.
Any questions? All right.
Actually, I do have a question, there was, why why did we pick the February timeline, was one of the things we were debating is when to do it? Because there's there's an argument to be said that when we change our leave ordinance, this could be part of the outreach for our leave ordinance. But it, there was a really strong preference expressed of doing it this spring. Can you articulate why that was, that they were pushing for now as opposed to waiting for it to be part of the other next announcements?
Sure, and just to clarify, if you approved today, we wouldn't have to do it this spring, we could do it next spring, and staff would work with the EPC to to decide on a date. But the reason why committee member Fredericks was advocating for doing it sooner rather than later is there's a pot of money with the state through the core program, it's a clean off-road equipment voucher, and it's getting subscribed pretty quickly, so there was ten million dollars allocated to landscapers for these really generous rebates, like up to ninety percent of some of the costs for leaf blowers, lawn mowers, that sort of thing, and that's getting getting kind of subscribed, so we're at six point five million left across the state. And so if we want our landscapers and our homeowners to get that financial incentive, which is really the key to getting them to make that transition, and we want to demystify that voucher program as soon as possible, was his argument, but we could host anytime from now to next year.
Can it be any gardener?
Correct.
So we will go to reach out, you have budget in there for sending out to residents, so residents can then hand it to their gardeners.
Absolutely, and that would be in bilingual, Spanish and English.
Yeah, that's that's what we talked about at that session, was that we would send things to the residents and ask them to give it to their gardeners when they're there to make them aware of this. And, you know, I also understood at the meeting that I think the majority of people weren't interested in rushing this thing in February, yet it still came here. So, any comments on that?
If the council would like to provide direction that they prefer it to happen at a later month to give more time for outreach and postman social media, and just kind of building awareness within the community about the training, or even waiting for the leaf blower committee to make a decision on an ordinance, we'd be happy to go with that guidance.
But the reason it's back here tonight for an early adoption is because that was the recommendation from the Environmental Programs Committee.
Yeah, the advantage of of approving it tonight is that now when we have our Earth Day event, we can publicize it. And we can have posters there, we can get the word out to people, are we allowing residents to attend as well?
Yes, that's part of the plan, and I wanted to introduce EPC committee member Amy Farrell, as she had a response to one of the questions.
Hi, everyone, thanks so much for having us tonight, so the primary reason that we wanted to have it in this window is the work schedule for many of the landscapers. The attendees, and we want them to be practitioners, of course, we want the homeowners to be there, but this is really about educating the landscapers, the practitioners, the flyers, all of the materials will be available. The, um, flyers, all of the materials will be available in both English and Spanish. And the goal is to get them when they have time. If we move into the spring, certainly the summer, they may not be available. So we're trying to capture that audience. Again, as Rachel pointed out, we could certainly push to next year. But we are concerned about these, um, incentives for switching over. The other issue is with regard to Earth Day, which I'm also, as you know, are working, I'm working on this as well. We really have to think about the timing, which is in late April. And by the time that gets out, we wouldn't probably be able to organize something till summer. And then we're running up against conflicts with the practitioners and their availability. So these kind of winter months seemed ideal.
So why couldn't this be part of Earth Day?
I, I believe our concern is the people who would come to Earth Day. May not be the same people that we would want to spend time for hours educating. This is a four hour train the trainer, practitioner, enabling organ, uh, thing. This is not just about teaching people about the various equipment that's out there. This is a practitioner, ch- uh, training, a practitioner, train the trainers. So it's a very different forum, a very different seminar. Where it's hands-on and it's not simply an introduction.
Is it possible to do an add-on to this contract so that if they're going to bring all this equipment here, that we do it? In, within a few days of Earth Day, so the people who, residents who want to go see the robots and. See all the cool, cool gizmos while they're physically here could attend. So it would still be separate, but is that something they do?
Certainly possible. I don't know if. Something we, we could take advice on and, and find out from the company if they could come back again. Um, but again, we were looking for that window that was before the spring.
Thanks. Are there any public comments with regards to this? All right, come back to the council for, oh, anything online? Okay, come back to the council for final discussion. And decision. Uh, yeah, my comment would be, I think February is pretty quick. It's just a couple of weeks away and March is a better time. If we do it this year.
I have a comment. Um. I think this is going to be a great program. My worry is that no one will, we won't have enough time to execute it where people come. So I'm inclined to say yes to this, but with the understanding that you guys will pull the cord if you don't. Feel like people are going to come and reschedule it. So this is an excellent program and I think. There will be a lot of benefit to it, but I'm worried, as Bill said, February, there's just not a lot of time, especially for you guys to even create. The marketing material and then get it out. I'm just, that's my big worry.
Can we approve it today without saying, because she said the contract is, we have a whole year to do it. So we're not, we don't, we can separate deciding whether to do it from when we do it.
Right, I think I would like to give the staff the discretion to make that call here. If, with the understanding, three thousand dollars for two people is a very expensive program. So I want to have people there to see this.
Sixty-five hundred.
Or is it, it's three thou- that's just for the, the.
Sixty-five hundred.
We're all in, yeah. So my point being, I want people there to make this worth the staff and the time investment. Of staff and the financial investment.
How many people do you think is reasonable to expect that we don't have that critical mass that we don't, we call it off?
Would have to be fifty, a hundred.
Twenty people, hundred people?
Fifty or fifty.
Are you guys going to collect RSVPs? I know this is complicated with gardeners because they're not, like, your hand, and a resident is handing it to a gardener, so.
I, I'm, I'm having a hard time putting my head around, like, my practitioners coming. They live. Way out of town. And I just, I think it, I don't know, I'm having a hard time figuring out how many, um. Landscape companies would come to an event like this voluntarily on a, wait. Did we discuss this?
Yeah, we discussed it at that meeting and, you know, and pushed and pushed.
It wasn't at that meeting.
Yeah, I know, I understand. There was just a few of us because it was a subcommittee, but.
Oh, okay.
You know, Ken was just adamant it had to be now or never.
He had done some outreach.
Excuse me.
He had done some outreach where he went and talked to a bunch of gardening organizations. And, and that leads me to another question. Can we do a mailing directly to the gardeners? Do we have a list of the gardeners or at least some of them? That are within our city zones?
We have a business license list, so if they've obtained a business license from the town, we can send it to that. But there are many that did not or do not have.
Yeah.
But I, I, I think, you know, Councilmember Holland's comment that, you know, it's a good program, it's good to do. If we can get, uh, critical mass to make it happen, it's worthwhile. We don't know what that critical mass is, but we could certainly work through those things and get some signups and see what happens.
Well, if you're going to get RSVPs, then I don't see how we can do that in February.
Right, I, I think February, I would agree, February is way too fast to do the marketing, to get the material out there, to make the contacts. We have a lot of other things on our plate at present. Um, so, but March or sometime after March. Uh, it could even be pushed into next spring if, if need be to get attendance.
Okay, any other comments from the council?
Yeah, I, I would say it sounds like a good thing to do. And we're trying to educate people about the benefits of using electrical, uh, garden equipment. Right? Uh, but it, you've got to have a critical mass. If we're going to spend sixty-five hundred dollars for it. Uh, you've got to have, i- if it's ten people, it's six hundred and fifty dollars a person. Is that worth it? That seems awfully low to me. Um, there's got to be some number and. I, I think staff auto advises what that number should be. Maybe it's twenty. I don't, I don't know what it should be, but it should be some number. Because people are going to come and otherwise we could just give them some kind of a trade-in. And just give them the electrical equipment and not have to come to the workshop.
Can we get the residents to come?
Yeah.
I mean, I think that is more feasible to get residents to come and learn about all of this. And, you know, maybe get, you know, a voucher or something for an upgrade on some equipment.
I think, uh, my, uh, commercial people are eligible for the vouchers at present.
Well, they could, they could pass it on to their commercial vendor.
Yes, true.
I, I think the goal would be to, I'll say again. Oh, the goal would be to have the resident bring their landscaper with them or to have their landscaper attend.
I can, I can see that.
Can we talk why it's not being done as part of the time on Earth Day? That's still spring. Um, and then we will also, we could piggyback with all the information we're sending out. We're going to have a massive mailing for that. We're going to have, you know, flyers and all sorts of stuff, so we could.
Could it be incorporated?
That's what I'm trying to say.
I think that that makes a lot more sense.
And then it's part of our stuff where the outreach we're already doing to every single household. And it's just one more activity we're doing as part of Earth Day, but not taking from the budget of Earth Day. That's not what I'm saying.
I think that makes sense, but I think if we just give the discretion to the staff to execute it, yeah, that's.
What I was going to say, we could, we could do is, um, attempt our reach out, our outreach. Um, go to the gardener groups. I know Ken has, um, spoken to some, um, also the schools. And see if we can get mass enough, uh, whatever that percentage is, maybe a percentage of. I don't know, residents or some number that, that feels appropriate and then bring it back and discuss with you on the timing, since we'll have a year. And, um, with Earth Day, um, I do have some concern about biting off more than we can handle. We, we're, we're planning a really exciting festival. And, um, if we can do it concurrently, we just have to allocate resources to ensure. That both were given equal attention, uh, to be successful.
Totally agree. Will you guys be able to ask them if they would extend the, if they're bringing all this equipment? Can they leave it for the rest of the day? For example, if this is in the morning, something like that. So just see if that's a feasible thing, because it'd be a great way to have equipment to show people. Our residents that don't want to actually go to a whole session, but would enjoy seeing this stuff.
One caveat, though, on what Amy just said. I, I wouldn't want us to put a date out there, a time out there. Get a commitment of people coming. It doesn't make critical mass, or it does. We come back to council, we'll get approval to move forward with the event. We've just hijacked people's day and all that sort of stuff. We need to, as Councilmember Holland says, leave that discretion to staff to make sure that we've hit critical mass. And if we don't, pull the trigger on it and reschedule it.
Yeah. Okay, so the target date would be?
At that staff, at the staff's discretion. At the staff's discretion within the window.
With Earth Day and it works, great. If, if not, we pick another time and location and date.
But after March.
Right.
No earlier than March twenty twenty.
All right, well, why don't we have staff come back with a recommendation after further discussion? Okay, so we'll continue this to another meeting like in two months.
I mean, I, I'm, I'm, I'm okay to approve it. I, I don't, I don't think the timing is all that important. I think whenever staff believes they can do it, but I think we have, what we have to do is set the minimum number of people. It's, if, if, if there's twenty-five people, we're paying two hundred and sixty dollars a person to be there. If it's thirty people, we're paying about two hundred dollars a person. I, some.
Well, and I, I think the, the workshop itself, correct me if I'm wrong, is three thousand dollars.
Right, correct.
The additional money is our advertising, we're getting refreshments and those things. So if, in printing, so if those costs are lower because there's less attendance, the workshop number is still the three thousand dollars. So you're not really dividing the sixty-five hundred, because if you have less attendees, you've got less other costs as well.
Based on kind of our initial outreach to residents and landscapers, we're anticipating fifty. And so that's what I crafted the budget around. Um, but we could also reduce the cost of the mailer if we just wanted to do a postcard, for instance, we could.
Absolutely.
Well. If, if staff decides to do it with the Earth, you know, advertise it with the Earth Day man, and that's going to save us. I would say we should have a minimum of thirty people. If there's not thirty people, we shouldn't do it.
Well, she, she was recommending, Rachel was recommending fifty.
I like, I like fifty.
That was the target.
Fifty-two.
I like fifty.
Okay.
I, I agree with Rick. I think fifty is a great goal. Thirty is still okay as far as.
So say, set a minimum of fifty. I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
But, you know, usual rules with RSVPs expect drop-off, so aim for higher than thirty.
Exactly.
Good. So support for the event, move it forward, fifty minimum, schedule it sometime after March. If it works with Earth Day, great. If it doesn't, then we'll just figure that schedule out, but leave that discretion to staff. Minimum attendance though of fifty.
All right, do you need a vote on this?
Yes, we need a motion.
Okay, all right, motion.
So moved. Second.
Okay.
Just whatever it is.
A little more detail on the so move, but fifty people.
And a fifteen minute, let's staff, uh.
All right, we'll have a vote. Go ahead.
Holland?
Yes.
DeGolia?
Yeah.
Lewis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Hi.
And there.
Yes, moving on. Okay.
EPC.
Okay, item number eleven, approval of Earth Day work plan and budget as recommended by the Environmental Programs Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This one again, we have Rachel Lunder here, who has worked with the EPC and the Chair of the EPC, Amy. She's still here? Uh, to, to aid in this presentation, this is the annual Earth Day event. The council at the last meeting asked for staff in the EPC to vet what the collaborative event would look like. What a budget would be and how that would transpire. Uh, and so this is the opportunity for the council to say, yes, let's go with that collaborative event. Or no, we want an Atherton-specific event, whether or not that's in the park or where in the park, we'll work that out, but we want it to be Atherton-specific. So that, I'll let, turn it over to Rachel from there.
Thank you, George. So after the December seventh meeting, I had an opportunity to meet with the EPC. As well as our neighboring jurisdictions and community-based organizations. And we started kind of envisioning what this event would look like, so we could get some more details, um, for, for you all to consider. So, um, together we, we developed this work plan I'm going to present tonight and that you have in your packet. Um, and we defined the purpose of the event as really bringing the community together in a, a fun and accessible way. To inspire really practical environmental action. So we're thinking about our climate action plan, about our new SB thirteen eighty-three composting requirements. By our new foodware ordinance. So really, how can we, um, introduce those concepts to folks and get them on board? Um, if they haven't yet heard about them or, or aren't necessarily interested, um, on a day-to-day in those items. Um, so we're looking at doing this event on Earth Day, April twenty-second, uh, at either Menlo Atherton High School or Menlo College. We have some initial interest from Menlo Atherton High School, um, and we're really excited about this new partnership opportunity to involve students in our Earth Day Festival. Uh, we would include all the same family-friendly activities that were successful last year. As well as some that our partners bring that would be really unique and add a lot of benefits to the experience for our residents. Um, those things include interactive animal and bug exhibits with the bug lady, the lizard lady and the Palo Alto Junior Museum. We'd also have a vendor and resource fair featuring organizations, local businesses and agencies that can help with home electrification, waste reduction and composting. Um, home gardening as well as student career and volunteer opportunities. We would have a speaker series. We've discussed some potential speakers from Stanford, um, very selected officials at kind of state and national level. As well as locally. Um, and then we would also think about some new things about having, um, an environmental fashion show. Um, and having sustainable cooking demonstrations where we're using induction cooktops at the event to introduce that technology. Um, other things we would include in the event would be a fix-it clinic, um, to, for folks to bring items that are broken. Whether it's a sewing machine that they have at home or, or jeans they need hemmed. I mean, it offers a practical way to, to reuse your items. And then, uh, additionally, we'd have our electric vehicle showcase and also have bikes and scooters for folks to test out. And so it'd really be a, a comprehensive event that has something for everyone, um, whether it's a speaker, an activity. Or, um, wanting to learn more about a, a local climate action plan. We would contribute up to five thousand dollars for the event and our partners have committed eighty-five hundred to the event. Um, with the ability to do more fundraising, since not all of them are local governments. Um, this work plan also provides a path forward if MA and Menlo College aren't able to partner with us on this event. We would host a smaller scale event at Town Center and we would forego some of the collaborations that I just mentioned. Um, because Hobart Palmer Park is, is not going to be available, um, on April twenty-second Earth Day. So it's recommended that the council discuss this, this work plan, ask any questions of me or Amy. And then decide whether you want to move forward with the work plan presented in front of you, or if you have any, um, additions or, or things to add or subtract.
I have a question. Uh, did you talk to the Atherton Arts? Last time we had a set of partners that were city-based, we had the Arborist, we had Atherton Art Department. All that, they are all still in this year, or are we not?
Yep, we would bring all, all those same partners.
And the art, do we have art exhibit facilities at the two new locations that we're considering?
So I'll let Amy add a little more details about the Menlo Atherton facility as she's been doing the outreach there.
Yeah, so we reached out to MA and, um, we've had a positive response with the two co-heads of the Science Department. Um, and they're enthusiastic and getting about getting the students involved as well. Um, in terms of an art exhibit, um, they don't have anything planned for that day for the buildings. I know they have a dance the night before, so, um, we should have, um, access. And I don't know if we could do it maybe in the library or another room, but that's something we could certainly work on. Um, and if it's at Menlo College, we could, you know, do the same. I think some of the brainstorming that we've done is really around building upon what you guys did last year, which was fan- fantastic. And if we have these other partners, we can probably do more. Um, again, just keeping in mind the staff resources, the individuals we have doing this.
Will they charge us for the space?
No.
Will we just, will we just reserve areas within the university or at the school off of their reservation system? And is it actually available? Did someone actually ask the reservation people? Because that's separate from who was supported in terms of the teachers or the.
Sure, yes, I went directly to the principal's office.
And it's available that day?
Know the same on Menlo College, yeah.
So if, uh, you, you indicated that there's probably going to be construction on the athletic field. Why isn't the North Meadow being considered? Because there's no construction plan for the North Meadow.
Are you talking about the par- our park?
Yeah, our park.
Oh.
Well, we, we could certainly consider that use. One of the challenges of the park, since it's the circulation element that's being done, is it would be the parking lot. The entry areas to the park that would be tentatively under construction. We just don't have those deadlines yet. It kind of depends on when the bids come back, what the contractor says. Their availability is for a start date. It may be that the park is totally available. We just don't have that number yet because it's out for bid.
What is their deadline when we get the bids in?
Uh, there is, I just don't have that in my head, sorry.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Well, you know, so location-wise, um i- in the past, we have used um Menlo School, Menlo Atherton High School uh as a venue, we use the Performing Arts Center to uh show a movie and have a panel discussion. Uh but we didn't have any exhibits around, so I'm having a little hard time envisioning, you know, what we would do, where would we just have it on the football field or something like that, Menlo Atherton High School? And I've been there a lot, so that and but the um uh the other location would be the Menlo College. I think that would lend itself because of they've got the big quad and a lot of, you know, they've had art shows there before. It's really a lovely environment. Um again, is it just too big for us to host it here uh at our town center uh with all the electric cars, I mean, in the parking lot and stuff? I don't know. Um this is such a beautiful venue. I'd love to bring more people here. And there's the library and stuff, if there's a, if it's.
I think it's too big for this.
Yeah, we. It's just too big.
Not enough parking.
Like, oh. We had three hundred to five hundred people. We never knew exactly because we didn't count them. Now, the Menlo Park is a whole different subset, so if we're if we're joining with Menlo Spark and Actara and the other, was it three sixty? They all bring a totally different crowd, so we're going to answer. Do you guys have an idea of how many people you would anticipate?
Park, did you?
They had about the same number of people last year.
They weren't the same, so could are we assuming that it's gonna it could potentially double in size? Could we get a thousand people at this?
I I'd say that's a fair estimation.
I I I thought that what we said was you can coordinate with those guys and they may have some great ideas and even want to participate, but we weren't doing a region-wide Earth Day where we're, you know, if you're having your Menlo Spark participate fully, then Menlo Park will also be here and we're gonna have, you know, wherever we have it, it will be inundated. So, you know, the if you're gonna do something on the football field, well, in the spring, they play lacrosse on the football field. I don't know what their schedule is. Move it to the baseball field. Well, in the spring, they're still playing baseball.
You're talking.
So, you know, I just don't know at the at the college, the quad is open. However, that's a limited space as well. But that to me is a is a better location, plus there's more parking.
Menlo College.
Yeah, Menlo College, so I would contact, you know, the and and they, you know, last years before, we've had them like for the Easter egg hunt and things like that. They've had volunteers come out and help and things like that. They would want to participate in that type of thing, so.
I think either of those two locations would work well. Um I think one of the ideas that, you know, in bringing partners, Menlo-related partners to the table, uh we thought Menlo Atherton High School services both communities. So it seemed like a natural place to hold the event. Um now, having said that, we have not spoken to Menlo College, right, about um their availability. We certainly, we can do that, um but we have gotten positive feedback. And and to the point about the location, we were thinking in the central courtyard area of having tables set up in a similar way that they were set up in the park last year. So kind of between the classrooms.
In Menlo School.
In.
Oh, right, Menlo Atherton School.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, and so parking, of course, in both locations, I think, would be plentiful. Believe one of the issues we really wanted to bring is whether or not we partner, correct?
Yeah.
Correct.
So I like the idea of it being on Earth Day, and we wouldn't be competing with other, like, say, Menlo Park or other jurisdictions, you know, surrounding us for people to come unless we wanted to have it on a on the Sunday, the day after, in case people can't come on that Saturday. But um I don't know, Mayor, I kind of like the idea of partnering with uh other people, and especially if they're going to come up with some funds. I think before you were saying that Menlo Park wasn't gonna pony up any money.
We did, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, and so.
That's what they said.
That's what they said before, but now they will.
I didn't hear that.
Oh, yeah.
Eight thousand.
Eighty-five, right?
Yeah, eighty-five hundred, as well as thirty volunteers.
I didn't know it was coming from them.
Uh it's the partners that, yeah.
Not the city of Menlo Park.
The city of Menlo Park, yeah.
Organizations.
So that makes it more palatable to me to have them join forces with us and kind of use our template and, you know.
Having the extra sets of hands and the thirty volunteers would certainly be helpful.
Yeah.
In in getting uh an event at that scale off the ground.
Exactly.
Is there still a plan to do a a competition between us and the other city, like the leaf blower event or something like that?
We could absolutely include that.
So are we gonna, will we be, will we be challenging uh Menlo Park in that case then?
Also have the cook-off with the uh action.
Okay, I still have my bowling.
Last year.
I think we don't want to.
Your ring. Okay.
Yes, I would like to be on the.
Okay, so um let's close.
Any other questions on this? All right, public comments on this? Any online? No, okay. Bring it back to the council, any final comments or?
I have one last question. I want to ask both of you directly, if you if it was totally up to you, would you do it collectively or just with us?
I would do it collectively. I was in between after our last meeting and then having the opportunity to meet with all of the partners on a call. We came up with some kind of governance as well of how we make decisions, how we'd run the event, and then showing that they have, you know, funds.
So you feel they'll work well with you?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Really organized. I mean, they do a lot of meetings themselves and.
More than.
Um and they're really committed to this type of event and these all these topics. So I think they'll bring a lot of value. And and it it will be great to have, not have to worry about competing with a town next door that might be having an event at the same time. Um that weekend, you know, there's events going on around the entire Bay Area, so.
How many people did Menlo Park get last year at their event?
Same as ours, correct?
About the same, and it rained though, so it wasn't a total fair comparison, but it does have a different feel than ours. I will say that. They're better, it's a good combination because they do some things better than we did, and then we did some things, I think, in my opinion, better than they did. So if we could do the best of, it'd be awesome event.
It was going to be six hundred people or more, right?
I would think.
Planning on it, so.
I would think.
Facility has to be able to accommodate six hundred people. We need to have parking for six hundred. Maybe not six hundred, but at least four hundred and fifty cars, right?
They should all carpool.
Exactly. Thank you, George.
Ride your bikes, yeah.
Well, we could suggest that.
And the outreach has started this evening.
Have a vote. Anybody want to make a motion?
Um I'll make the motion to approve this. Earth Day plan. I'll second it.
Okay, go.
Holland.
Yes.
DeGolia.
Yeah.
Lewis.
Yes.
Vice Mayor.
Yes.
And Mayor.
Yeah. Okay, last item. Number twelve, revisions to the housing draft housing element in response to HCD's comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is the the another opportunity for public engagement of this item. As you know, there we've been, over the past two years, we've had probably twenty to twenty-five public meetings on this. We've had uh about ten community engagement meetings on this. There've been a number of uh resident hosted private engagement meetings where they've invited staff to come speak to their neighborhoods. Um and at the last council meeting on January eleventh, the council opted to uh add a uh an RM ten zone, which was basically twenty-three Oakwood, and an RM twenty zone for multifamily along uh El Camino Real from Stockbridge to the town border. Following that uh public meeting on January eleventh, uh staff said that we would send out a letter to all of those uh property owners, and indeed, we did send out a letter to all of those property owners, but we neglected to include a map uh of of what those intended properties were. So that was certainly a failure on staff's side in terms of getting that map out there, but it was also on the town's website. Uh and we referenced the town website in the letter, and we have had a number of public engagement meetings over the last few years. Uh so housing discussion is not foreign to to many in this community over that period of time. Um with respect to tonight's item, this is a an opportunity for additional feedback and some potential direction or changes by the council, but no decisions are actually being made. Uh tomorrow night, there's also another public comment opportunity with the Planning Commission hearing the item. Uh then on January thirty first at two P M, the City Council will again review the final document for adoption and submission to the state. That's January, the January thirty first deadline for our submission. Following that, I mean, the housing element itself does not technically upzone, rezone, chainzone, adopt, anything. Uh those all come later uh with a series of policy adjustments and ordinance changes that the council and the Planning Commission will see. Again, there'll be a number of public hearings and public engagement opportunities as those matriculate through. They may not all exactly match what's in the housing element. There may be changes to them. Uh and then the council also has to, as through the process, adopt ordinances to address the um uh objective design criteria for those new uh multifamily zones that addresses issues such as fence height, screening requirements, setback requirements, lot coverage requirements, all those sorts of things, parking requirements uh that uh this new zone would require. Uh and so those all come later as well with a series of uh public engagement and public comment opportunities. Um we also may have an iterative process with the state. Once we submit this on January thirty first, uh the state has sixty days to review it. Uh and then they may come back and say, yes, it's substantially approved, but you need to make these minor amendments. That would be great. Uh but um it's also possible that they say, no, despite what you've done, you need to come back with more multifamily zones or more uh criteria with respect to how your ADU program is going to be run, all kinds of additional information. Uh so with that, that concludes my portion of the staff report. You have Lisa Costa Sanders, the project manager, on the phone there, um Zoom, and you have the city attorney as well. We're happy to answer any questions the council may have, but the main focus of this evening is to take public comment.
Okay, so he said, do you have anything you'd like to add to what George passed on?
Sorry. No, I don't have anything to add. Thank you.
Okay, any questions from the council? Okay. Okay, well, now open it up to public comments, which I assume most of you have been waiting here for.
Mayor, would you?
The wait.
Would you like me to kind of address the different time limit we're going to use?
Yeah, we're going to use two and a half minutes. Uh and and as before, with the with the attorney when he was speaking, um Anthony gave the attorney a heads up when he was getting ready to done, be done, so. Uh or when the time limit was expiring, so we're asking you to stick with the two and a half minutes and then also, you know, one comment per person. You you can't give two comments on this item, just one, and you can't give your time to somebody else. Okay, so with that, I'll take public comments.
And so if I could just, I'll call the names that I have on these cards. If you're, if you haven't given me a card, if you could fill one out, that way we can kind of track it a little easily. Um would you like to do in-person first, and then we can go to online after that?
That's fine with me, or you can go, you can alternate if you'd like. I don't care, whatever you'd like, Anthony, whatever's easiest for you.
All right, thank you. So the first name I have on here is is Stan HSU, I believe, Sue.
Bye. So we're we're going to have a good, good decorum here, so we can all hear. So there's not going to be any cheering, and there's not going to be any comments or booing or anything like that. But, you know, we're going to handle this question and answer period respectfully. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for the time. My name is Stan Shu, and my wife, who was here earlier but had to leave, Courtney, and my two young boys have been Atherton residents for ten years. We live at seventy-three Gresham, one of the houses in consideration. And we are homeowners, and unlike, we are homeowners, not renters, as some would uh assume uh is the case in our scenario. Much like my other concerned neighbors, which you'll hear from later this evening, we were surprised to learn that our street and the adjacent homes along El Camino were targeted as part of Atherton's housing element plan. The proposed plan fails to meet the goal of affirmatively furthering affordable housing through Atherton. It does not appear constructed in good faith or in good spirit. Altering our precious seventeen properties for multifamily targets does not achieve the goal of community. It actually does quite the opposite. Number one, as my, and you'll hear from our neighbors uh later on, but there are many vacant lots spread throughout Atherton. By targeting consecutive lots on the border road with city in El Camino, you are actually segregating, not integrating multifamily and higher-density properties throughout Atherton. Two, you know, I'm keenly aware that the larger and wealthier cohorts of Atherton consider our corridor the poverty pocket of Atherton. And the proposal continues to accept and promote that stigma. I'm disappointed that the proposal effectively creates a redwood city extension at the expense of our homes and our tight-knit community. Oddly, we currently represent that diversity with that already exists by having properties that are already on the smaller size. Like three, by concentrating the income diversity to one section of Atherton, you're exhibiting, you are not exhibiting any goodwill, and you're actually making the community a place, not a place for all socioeconomic categories. Instead, it actually promotes an us versus them mentality. We've heard of plans with the housing density, I don't know the numbers, eight to ten, I've heard uh varying uh varying numbers uh per acre. I cannot imagine how how you would achieve that by without building upwards. Uh so I've also heard that plans that if you're going to build upwards, a large privacy wall is needed to separate those very low and low-income properties from the neighboring locations. Again, you are effectively promoting an us versus them mentality instead of embracing and nurturing an inclusive community. So I strongly disagree with this proposal and am weighing all legal opportunities and options to ensure that my home, my family, and our tight-knit community that you see wearing the same shirts have an opportunity to be treated justly compared to somebody wealthier residents of Atherton. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Anthony, next.
Mary Alexander.
Um, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I am Mary Alexander, and I live at Gresham, on progression line fifty. I'm not one of the houses that have been circled, but I am a cul-de-sac, I'm a cul-de-sac off of uh Gresham Lane, which is a cul-de-sac. And I am an attorney. Um I do personal injury, so I deal with traffic issues and accidents and safety, and so that's what I'm here to talk about uh tonight. And uh we are very concerned in the community and oppose this plan. And one of the reasons uh is the effect on traffic and safety. And um just to remind you, Gresham Lane is very close to the intersection of Selby and El Camino. And it is, um there's only one way out because it's a cul-de-sac. And today, um when we go out uh during commute hours, it is very difficult to get out of Gresham Lane. It uh it's either turn left to go uh west on Selby, or particularly hard to go turn right to um get to El Camino. And so you end up, and there's a long line at the intersection, somebody has to have the courtesy to let you in uh to turn left or right. That is only going to get worse if you make Gresham Lane the this cul-de-sac into a higher density of population. And um it is very um sure, if we increase it here and and at the uh area of Gresham Lane, then it's also going to affect Selby Lane all the way up because uh the the increase in traffic, people who are commuting, they're going to go uh left and west on Selby to get to two eighty or Alameda to get to their, get to their work. Um and then I'll certainly make the intersection at the uh at Selby and El Camino worse uh with the number of people who are trying to turn right to get to their jobs, which are either in Ridgeway City or going south into the park and and the rest of Silicon Valley. So I want to turn uh more specifically to the effect of that traffic on the safety. And that is, the, we've all seen, those of us that lived there, as I have for thirty-three years, fatalities at the intersection of Selby and El Camino. We're going to have more of those. We're going to have more traffic and um which will affect pedestrians, bicyclists along Selby and uh particularly children and the children that are going uh going to school. Thank you. So in conclusion, we're, I ask you to please not adopt this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Next.
Tom Georgie, four twenty-five East Oakwood Boulevard with Stephanie Sargent. I do not believe Atherton's housing element will be approved as it is currently composed. If I've learned anything from not missing any of these meetings since last June, it's that HCD pretty much expects a change of approach. The modus operandi in here seem to be, how can we meet this mandate and change as little as possible? I feel like you all tried to sharpshoot this instead of thinking ahead and doing the really hard job of broadly rezoning your town. It's what it called for. You declined to include any property, the town controls, no skin in the game. And instead opted for one actionable project that's gonna net you three low income units. And that's only with an inclusionary ordinance. And also last minute throwing all these folks's homes into the mix on the El Camino, which I hadn't heard discussed until that night. And I've been to them all. So this is not what HCD wants. They want something more meanings, meaningful, something that, that truly addresses the housing shortage. I believe your element would be approved if you were to allow for density that exceeds what is currently allowed via SB nine splits and ADUs, something along the lines of six units per acre, all along the entirety of the El Camino and Valparaiso and Alameda and any other arterial street. Of course, subject to design review. The density I suggested pales in comparison to what you're throwing at twenty-three Oakwood. That's ten units per acre. That's sixteen units on a one point five acre parcel. It's totally out of character for the neighborhood. It's not an arterial street. It's a small side street and you're jamming it in there. Anyways, I hope you guys are thinking bigger because you're gonna be out of compliance with state law pretty soon. And without a Plan B, one that acknowledges that Atherton needs to change, you're gonna continue to appear like you don't take HCD's, HTC's mandate seriously. Someone else is gonna start making these decisions for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I just ask you, are you gonna speak as well, Ms. Sargent, or is this just for the both of you?
Yeah, we should go through that one after.
Council, Stephanie Sargent. All right. I just wanted to say that, so you guys know, I don't want this built next door to my house. Had this discussion many times. I just wanted to let you know, I have, I am in discussion with Redwood City. And they're talking, because on the assessor's map, it shows twenty-three Oakwood has happened, Redwood City. So they are talking to their people to find out if they have any jurisdictional say over the property. So I hope that maybe helps you guys consider not using it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Lauren Gruner.
Hi, Lauren Gruner. I've lived in Atherton for twenty-five years and I live at sixty-six Gresham Lane. And I, and I know this has been a big issue. It's a tough issue. I know the state's come in. It's not kind of opposing completely against what Atherton has stood for for all these years of kind of having the large lots and the large homes and so on. I do feel like though, this particular stretch along Gresham, I don't feel is a great space just because, you know, they're mostly a third, a third of an acre. And I thought my understanding was if it wasn't a half of an acre, it couldn't be included in the affordable housing. So it's gonna require, you know, having two homeowners decide to sell their properties together and so on. And it feels like if we could, I do feel like if the focus is hopefully finding some additional one and point five acre or two point acres that could conceivably be built in a way that didn't impact the rest of the community too, too terribly. Feel like you could get, you know, sixteen or twenty units into a property versus trying to really disturb or disrupt a neighborhood that isn't really the most ideal lot to be building for that. And I understand that there's the need to be close to a quarter, but there are lots, I think, along some of the other main thoroughfares that could fall into that. I also feel that it's important to, if you're going to build some of these things, that you split them across the school districts across, you know, so part of, maybe part of it goes to Selby Lane, but part of it maybe goes to Menlo Park Schools and also Los Alamedas. It would give opportunities to people to go to good schools and have opportunities to diversify the, the, I guess, allow this to be spread across the community, not just in one, one area. In regards to the, in regards to the overall thing, I, you know, and the the inclusionary fee that's within the overall document, I don't necessarily agree with that. I feel like, like everybody should be able to build and not necessarily be hit another, have another additional fee. And I also feel
It's about thirty seconds now.
Okay, the other thing that's come up in some of the discussions is about whether or not, whether or not we're funding, the city's trying to fund this development. I think that took so long to get this building built. I think anything that the city tries to do to get involved in this will, will not go well. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Pam Silverall, Silveroli.
Good evening, council. My name is Pam Silveroli and I live at ninety-nine Gresham Lane, next door to our dear neighbors, Joanne and Charlie Ramorino at number ninety-eight, who are here with me in spirit. It is known, and let it be known again, that no one on Gresham Lane received the map as stated in the January twelve letter. A handful of us were provided the map when someone taped it to our doors and my gate on Sunday, January fifteen. Can you imagine learning the fate of your home by somebody putting a flyer and a map on your gate? Just can you imagine? We have been denied our due process as we have had roughly two days' notice to prepare for this meeting. And now only two weeks' notice before the plan is presented to the state. This is not enough time to fully understand what is being proposed, to ask important questions and to secure legal representation. You may all have known for two to three years that El Camino Real would be targeted for development. However, we, the victims of your deal making, have been left out of the process. I am in the process of hiring an attorney, as we all are. And we will prove that you have not operated in good faith. We will fight to the bitter end on this, and I can assure you that all the wrongdoing will be revealed. It's going to be a very painful journey for all, yourselves included. So get ready for the storm.
Right, yeah. Next.
Just listed as Jennifer on Gresham Lane.
Hello, my name is Jennifer and I am an eighteen year homeowner on Gresham Lane, part of the El Camino corridor that is up for rezoning. I'm here obviously to address the belief that offering up the El Camino homes will resolve the lower income units dilemma. But would a builder truly choose these lots for low income housing? The majority of the seventeen lots on El Camino are a third of an acre or less. The most recent sale of a less than one-third acre lot on our street sold for four million dollars. In order to create a one acre plot, a developer would have to purchase three adjacent homes, two most likely at a premium, and then be forced to consolidate. So after all this, the developer would be out of pocket twelve million and still may not have an entire acre. Meanwhile, across town right off Alameda, there is a one point oh seven acre lot selling for five point five eight million. Right off of Middlefield, there is a one point four acre lot selling for seven point three five million. And large tear down lots like these are put up for sale far more often in Atherton than our little homes. Your updated housing element claims that a developer is interested in buying four of our lots. I would love to know who this developer is because all along, council has repeatedly said that Atherton land is priced so high, no one will develop on it. But all of a sudden, a developer emerges last minute who is willing to pay a premium for our little lots. Because, and I have to reemphasize the financials of this. Four of our lots is one point two eight acres with a fair market value of sixteen million dollars. The property right off Middlefield is one point four eight acres and is listed at seven point three five million. Does this seem like a smart financial move to you to pay eight point six five million more for a smaller lot, especially when you are trying to build low income housing and make a profit? So if your goal is to not just plan it, but to build it, this plan fails.
You have about thirty seconds.
In addition to the impossible financials of the situation, you also have an entire community of families who don't want to move. Knowing this, you cannot in good faith, or even with any honesty, say to the state that there is a likelihood that these parcels on El Camino will be developed in eight years. They just won't. And you cannot in good faith go to the state and say in housing element that they will be redeveloped because of the financials and because of the fact that the homeowners don't want to move. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna Chandra. C-H-A-N-D-R-A.
Hello, good evening. I'm Donna Chandra and I live at ninety-seven Gresham Lane. We have lived there for twenty-one years. We've raised our two boys in that house. They're currently at Stanford, so they can pop in and out. And we have never, ever rented out our property, for the record. My family opposes the housing elements inclusion of the lots on Gresham Lane, including on the grounds that all of my fellow neighbors here are presenting tonight. And I wanted to mention that we have a petition that we're going to continue to circulate tonight and after tonight, and I will be giving this to you at the end of the evening to put in the record. So as you know, you have to submit the housing element in good faith to the state. I want to address two issues that show that this plan was not put together in good faith. The first one is that there are other community members, as you are aware, that do want to voluntarily upzone their properties, voluntarily upzone their properties. There are also those who want lot splits, which are, which another committee member here talked about. Those would be two ways to get land developed to suit these purposes from people who want to voluntarily do it rather than try to force us homeowners who've lived here with our families out of our properties. A recent article in Almanac states that several residents wrote a letter on January eleventh stating that they would be willing to participate in a regional housing solution while maintaining its character as a family oriented community, especially where the owners are interested in developing denser and multifamily housing. I would love to know where that letter is. I tried to find, search it on the town website and I couldn't find it. So I would love to get a copy of that letter. And there was reference to another four acre lot on one seventy Atherton Avenue that also expressed an interest in upzoning. And there's been references in, in articles to numerous others as well. We have not had the time, the notice, the legal representation to actually dig deeper on this, but, but we will. I also mentioned, the town has also received multiple applications for SB nine lot splits that would allow for additional housing by people, again, who want to voluntarily do this. They should be considered instead of forcing us out of our home.
Please wrap up. Thank you.
I'm sorry?
If you could wrap it up.
Oh, okay. My last one, I'm sorry, is that there is another provision of the California government code that says if you submit a plan to the state that includes non vacant lots, which ours are, you have to discuss the feasibility of it actually being developed for that purpose. And I can tell you in the last two days, talking to all of my neighbors here, none of us want to sell to a developer. There's zero chance as of today that we want to do that. So already, your plan is going to fail at the state level because none of us want to sell to a developer. And this is personal. I want you to all think about this. If this was your house, your kid's house, and you were never allowed to develop your property the way you had purchased it and intended it, would you think this was fair and in good faith? And I want you to go to bed tonight and think about it because it really is not fair. And we're very upset. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next.
We have Jim Wang. If I could just say, I don't want to interrupt anybody. I know that the timer shows the tick down time, so I'm trying my best to be respectful, so I just don't want to do that.
Jim Wong, council. My name is Jim Wong. I moved to two Selby a little over two, three and a half years ago. We raised a family in Assaton on a single family residential property, just as everybody else. This plan disproportionately asked our neighborhood to burden for multifamily low income housing without sufficient support. The media explode, exposed the rezoning prior to us who are affected. We suffer from an immediate negative impact on the property value and uncertainty of future. Our child, child goes to school nearby. Assaton Home is valuable to us and the generations to come. If Assaton's fair share of state housing requirement is becoming inevitable, we would like our elected officials to make long term vision and plan a priority. A rushed proposal helps nobody. We have rights to seek for advices. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Bronner.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Bronner. I have lived on eighty-five Gresham Lane for over thirty-three years, and prior to that, I was in Menlo Park. I have raised two sons and I worked and I'm retired now. And my sons are both professionals, graduated from Harvard and other universities. And I am very upset because I like my one-third acre. And I have raised my children there. And this is very upsetting. I'm half Iranian and half or American Iranian. I have lost my home. Back there, I can't go back there. And now, after being here for over fifty-five years, because I also went to school at Boston University, I don't think that I have a home. Somebody is pulling the carpet from underneath my feet. And I don't think this is fair. It's very disrespectful. And I think I'm discriminated. I don't know if you feel for what I'm saying. But this is proving painful. Not to have a country and not to have a home. You are devaluing my property. I cannot leave it to my children because I don't know what they're gonna do with it. Please. I want you to reconsider this. Thank you, babe.
Thank you. Andrew Ryan.
Good evening. I'm Andrew Ryan. I live at sixty-one Gresham Rain, Gresham Lane with my wife Jennifer, who's already spoke. I live next to Stan and Courtney and their two boys. We were raising two boys. We've been there. We've lived in the house seventeen years. We've been planning on it being our forever house. As others have mentioned, we may have small lots, but we're, we're still part of this community. We, we value the community. And we're all, by and large, we're we're families raising children. I think that's, that's, as we've got, as we've come together to, to address this issue, that's the one thing that's showed up. Is we all have kids, we're all trying to raise our children. We're, we're all talking about leaving our, our homes to our children as, as part of our legacy. So we just, we have no intention of moving. It looks, it looks Um, so we just, we have no intention of moving. It looks, it looks from my perspective like this is being done kind of in haste. And uh, I think as Stan said, it's sort of, we, we sort of look like Redwood City anyway, so let's just, let's just, uh, you know, give it away sort of, um. And uh, and I guess there's probably another thing going on. It looks like that because we're small lot owners, we probably don't have the means to fight as well as, you know, some of the, some of the really big billionaires living in the huge lots, but um, that's not the case and um, I guess we're going to find out about that. So um, so again, we are, uh, we're all disappointed in this. And I think that just, uh, looking at the map, you can see that what, what this will do is effectively erase what little housing diversity there is. I don't, I don't think you get any increase in diversity by taking the one pocket that actually has some and making it a different kind. So I, I think that's anybody, uh, anybody looking at a map is going to see that and anybody, you know, I'm not a real estate guy. I'm not a lawyer. I look, I can see that. I think anybody in Sacramento will see that. So I, I think it looks like a really weak proposition on the face of it, just because I just don't think it's credible. And, and so I think, uh, so we'd really like you to reconsider this action. I just don't think it's right and I don't think it's going to work. So thank you.
Thank you. Jean Yi.
Good evening, um, council. Um, I'm here to represent my family Wei and my two daughters who actually, uh, one is middle schooler, one is high schooler, go to secret heart school. Um, we, we are new to this community. We actually just purchased the house of thirty seven Gresham Lane last year. So we live here for a year. The reason we came here, just because we want to go through all the hurdles and challenges post pandemic. We really want to be closer to our kids' school. So we have been living in the Bay Area for twenty two years. Uh, most of the time at UC Berkeley and then um, we moved to Foster City, stayed there for fifteen years. So at, you know, as, as, as all my neighbor have said, we have a really tight community here. We are homeowner. We also really wanted to have, you know, give us our kids the best environment closer to school, enjoy the community. Um, even though we have a smaller, smaller lots, but we actually hold a very um, um, strongly about this community and I think almost it's really disheartening to hear this news, almost feel like we have discarded through this community just because convenience maybe, right? Because as, as you can hear from every one of us, none of us going to sell this house. It's going to make this plan really, really difficult. And also many of the kid, family here have two kids that actually go to the school nearby. And as you heard, this is not a through street. Coming down in the morning to drop our kids, even just to Secret Heart, which is five minutes away, it's not very easy. Because on Chevy Land, there is elementary school. So it's a very contracted traffic zone in the morning. So I think building this, making this community, um, the housing plan for the city is not going to be really feasible. It actually adding a lot of issues. And also if you get out on Chevy luckily and then making left, right turn, El Camino is very difficult. And so I, we, we also don't feel this is really feasible and safe plan for our kids. And lastly, um, you know, I, we, um, we feel, um, this is emotional. I think we finally bring our kids closer to her classmates in this community. Emotionally, it's going to be really difficult for our kids for us to move out. And also financially, practically, just going to be very difficult and not for us actually really plan to sell our house. We really want to pass it down to our kids, make sure they have a great environment to grow. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Jeff Rabkin. Uh, Jeff Rabkin?
I think Jeff.
Oh, he was, yeah, thank you. Brian Clark, I think. All right. Make an entrance.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Brian Clark. My wife Amy and I have lived in Redwood City on the border of Atherton for a good part of eighteen to twenty years. Uh, the rezoning that you're doing at twenty three Oakwood is really unattractive. Um, I don't want to reiterate all the excellent points that people have made here. Um, so what I'm going to do is kind of raise it up level and remind you of your obligations and all of our obligations to modify and make sure that we have housing for less privileged individuals. I don't like the idea that we have to do it. I don't think you guys like the idea that you have to do it. I don't think anybody does, but as a state, that's what's mandated. And I think you guys have failed your responsibility. You are elected officials. You should have been doing this for the last multiple years. And now what you're doing is the very last minute, you're making your problem my problem. So I hope you guys figure out what to do. I think you should have done a better job. I think you have failed miserably and uh, that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Francine. Milburger, maybe? Miltonberger, thank you.
Hi, my name is Francine Miltonberger. I am also in, uh, on the Oakwood Boulevard uh, community. And I know that, um, we have had many people come and talk with you before, uh, and wrote letters, et cetera, myself being one of them. The plan at twenty three Oakwood just, I can't emphasize enough how much of a complex negative impact that will have in our little neighborhood. I hope that those of you who are looking at that, I know it's tempting to have a developer who wants to do something with a piece of property already. But it's not even realistic to think that you can have sixteen properties. You know, on that sixteen townhomes on that property and have that neighborhood handle the traffic that need, that would logically flow. You got to figure there'll be at least two cars for each one of those units. And they only have one way in and one way out, and that's on Oakwood Boulevard. Which is not a high thorough, a high uh, volume thoroughfare by any stretch of imagination. It is also a property that is in a neighborhood that is very walker friendly. And almost any time of the day, as long as it's not raining, you will see tons of people walking their dogs, walking their children or just going out for, you know, exercise. Uh, it is really problematic to be putting that kind of density in that neighborhood on that particular piece of property. It'd be a different thing if there are other accepts, you know, access routes to it, but that's not what's in the cards here.
Thank you. Thank you. Next. Lisa Thomas.
I'm Lisa Thomas from forty eight Gresham Lane. It seems to me, um.
Tell us when you're ready and then we can get started. We won't put the clock on until you're here. Okay.
Remi Thomas.
I'm Vice Mayor, Mr. Mayor, council members. My wife Lisa Thomas is too emotional about this topic. Um, so I just want to say a few words. I'm from France. She's from England. We were both brought up in very rural areas and we picked this area uh, of the bay because it is still somewhat more, less urbanized than, than other places. Um, we were able to put all our savings into a house. We rebaptized it, the farm on Gresham Lane. We've got ten to fifteen chickens in the backyard producing eggs that we sometimes give away to, to our neighbors. Um, I'm fighting opossums, raccoons, uh, foxes uh, and other coyotes from eating my chickens. And I'm not particularly happy about that, but it talks about the fact that wildlife has been somewhat preserved this close to, to El Camino. Uh, a couple of years ago, we lost a cat, uh, on El Camino. Our neighbors constantly bring back our new cats that keeps going on their properties. All of this environment where our kids have been brought up will obviously be, be destroyed. Uh, so rather than sharing the burden of this proposal over the broader community of Atherton, you picked one neighborhood, which, which is perhaps, you know, an easy solution. Um, but there's consequences for our community. We didn't sign up for this and obviously we would probably litigate, uh, if this proposal were to go through. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Rosa Cornelio.
Good evening, council. My name is Rosa and um, we moved to Sabalo Lane twenty three years ago because we wanted a better quality of life. We just renovated our home to prepare uh, for our older years to come, being that my husband is disabled. When we found out that the town was considering Sabalo and Hershham location for their benefit to fulfill the state mandate housing, I was shocked. I have to also say, I got a flyer. I never got nothing through the mail saying that this meeting was happening or they were even thinking of using our property as part of it. Um, as you uh, well know, El Camino is a very busy road. Redwood City is planning to do a one point three million square feet office space, which could include six hundred and thirty one units of housing, which means if they do six hundred and thirty one times two, that's a thousand two hundred and sixty two cars from residents, not even counting the office space that people use in Sequoia Station. And they just approved a hundred and twenty units across Sequoia Station where the record man is, which is a hundred and twenty times the other person's, the spouse, you've got two hundred and forty cars. So you've got a hundred, a thousand two hundred and sixty two plus two hundred and forty, that's it's a thousand five hundred and two. This does not even include the office space people that, um, and their customers over there in Sequoia Station. When you, um, are, uh, our El Camino cannot handle so much traffic in such short proximity. If you do three hundred units or, um, where you want to do to here in El Camino, um, it just, it, it would be thousands of cars. And when you, um, this is our main road that allows our neighbor, neighboring, uh, cities to come and, and assist in all emergency resources. You ha, you can't forget what happened to San Bruno, uh, fire. The, we, El Camino is, is, and it will, and um, if you build there, you'll have to also go ahead and put a light in, in Selby Lane because you will force the children that have to walk from across from El Camino um, on the other side to go to Selby Lane School. They cannot pass there. They cannot walk there. You're going to have to put a light. And people that live on Selby Lane, all that area, they don't want a light. We like to keep it rural. We like to be able to enjoy that. And all that exhaust from all those cars. Those kids are, they're tiny. The cars are right there. They're breathing all that air going through. This is not right. These, we have a lot of children that walk to school. You, it is, it's not right, not to mention that everybody who has bikes and going, Selby Lane is something very special to Atherton.
Please do your best to wrap it up.
And I'm sorry that I'm taking extra, but you need to realize that the children is also being affected. They have to walk to school and they are breathing all that. So I just wanted to go ahead and just state that Sequoia Station with all that stuff and then wanting to put all this on.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
It's not right.
Thank you.
So that was the last card that I have. We can give, um, Ms.
Please raise your hand online if you have a comment you'd like to make.
Those are the only card. I mean, if you, you'll obviously have.
One more, sorry. Sorry. Thank you for waiting.
No. Just come up in a moment, right after this lady. It's fine. It's fine. Everybody will have a chance.
Thank you, council. Uh, I am going to read because I've got a lot to say and I only have two and a half minutes. I live at, uh, ninety eight Gresham Lane with my wife Donna. Uh, sorry, ninety seven Gresham Lane with my wife Donna and our two kids. Uh, the residents of Gresham Lane support affordable housing in Atherton. We don't, and I grew up in your, uh, affordable, uh, low income housing in New York. What we don't support is having one street bear the brunt of the entire burden. The council is trying to create a Redwood City extension that will minimize integration with the town's wealthier properties. Some of you may potentially have conflicts of interest as better options might pertain to your neighborhoods. Moreover, you are seeking to rezone Gresham to M, M F R only, fully aware that it will require two to three property owners to agree to sell to an M F R developer, effectively rendering it impossible for any one property owner to have real agency over the disposition of their land. This likely amounts to a taking, given the limitation of use and difficulty of sale. And that's a remarkable feat because it's hard to have a takings claim in California, but you've created one for us. Claims that all residents have known about the M F R zoning plans for years are totally disingenuous. Gresham Lane was finalized as a location only on January eleventh. And as was mentioned, there was no map provided when a letter was sent notifying us that you were coming to a determination. Perhaps this wasn't purposeful, but it certainly gives the appearance that the council was trying to run out the clock on us with January thirty first looming. We suspect bad faith and potential violations of your fiduciary duties and the Brown Act, of which I'm aware because I'm a trustee for the San Jose Pension Plan. Uh, if forced to litigate, council members, personal and town communications will be sought for discovery because something's not right here. The politics of ganging up on Atherton's poverty pocket and creating a Redwood City extension are disastrous. We will inform media outlets and highlight the complicity of council members. You are violating the spirit of low income housing policy. The broader public needs to know this.
About thirty seconds, sir.
If the current plan proceeds, we intend to lobby the state to let them know that this was offered in bad faith by all of you. Um, we're preserving all of our rights and intend to retain councils to fight this if necessary. A former mayor informed me that he believes it's rather outrageous that no one from Gresham Lane has been appointed to the general planning committee and planning commission. We need to be included in the sausage making ASAP. I'll also add in closing that I've helped many of you get elected in the past.
Do you want to leave your name? I didn't catch it. Yeah, I'll take that. And next we have, uh, Alan Engie.
Her name's Lee.
Oh.
And the last name and seeing.
My apologies.
Anyway, I'm an eighteen year residence of eight Selby Lane. I've raised two daughters there. They go, uh, they went to Menlo Atherton. And actually my daughter wrote a nice little letter to the council saying that it was dangerous across the street on Selby, which I believe you guys have actually responded to. I just want to reiterate everything everybody else has said. There seems to be a lack of integrity in letting us know about the uh, rezoning for our specific neighborhood because we found out through the media, we did not get a map and maybe we should have been more proactive, but we only had three days to be proactive at this point. Most of us were on vacation. I was actually out of town. Um, we represent a diverse group of people, the most diverse for Atherton, as you have seen. I think that's all you've seen, including disability. So that's very diverse. Um, let's see, in addition to that, there were a lot of other volunteers, I guess, that we haven't considered, but one thing I do think we should do is include more people in the solution. I know this is not an easy solution, but you didn't include anybody on the strip of land to be talked about as part of the solution. I think we're all willing to help out. I did not grow up in Atherton. I grew up working my way through. My husband is an immigrant. So we've worked a way to get a house here. My kids just asked me the other day, is this going to be my family house? And I was like, oh my God, this just came up. How did this happen? This may not be our family house anymore. So I am disappointed. I am disappointed that we were singled out. I do think that we could help with the solutioning, but I think you guys need to ask us for participation. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Online, I'm going to give them an opportunity with your permission, mayor. Okay. Jennifer Chung.
Good evening. Um, actually, my name is Jennifer Chung. I'm here with my husband Albert Chung. And hopefully our dog will continue to be quiet in the background. Uh, this will be our second time speaking on Zoom and you have also received letters from us in the past. I do want to thank you that you did include people on Oakwood with a letter this time, even if it missed the map, at least it was a good step forward with ensuring that we had some communication. I apologize, we're at three six six East Oakwood Boulevard, so just down the street from the proposed Oakwood development. Um, I continue to question, as does my husband, why you are looking at a higher density plan for twenty three Oakwood than you are for other areas. Um, I would like to have that answer, please. In addition, I would like you to continue to be considering, as we've heard from everybody tonight, about the high level of traffic on Selby Lane and Oakwood and it. and it part, and how it will affect Selby. I commute, my husband and I both commute either through El Camino or through Selby every morning. And as I've mentioned before, the backup on those streets can be significant. Putting in a development with significant amount of housing will only exacerbate that problem unless you or the developer is required to put in more traffic modification, such as traffic lights perhaps at Selby and Oakwood and/or at Selby and El Camino. Other speakers tonight have spoken that they are opposed to that. As mentioned earlier, both Selby and Oakwood are part of the Pennsylvania, excuse me, the Peninsula Bicycle Route and is for pedestrians. These streets have no sidewalks. As other speakers have mentioned, it is a very popular area to walk. It is going to be an increased safety hazard. When you are considering any zoning changes, you need to be considering what that impact is going to be. As I mentioned earlier, and one speaker mentioned, is that that traffic backs up on Oakwood to El Selby. At, I encourage all of you to be going out there at from seven thirty in the morning to eight thirty in the morning and watching what happens on Selby. It's a mess.
You have about thirty seconds, ma'am.
Thank you. In addition, I would like you to please be considering how you are going to ensure safety with emergency vehicle access. That intersection at Oakwood and Oakwood is really tough. And I do request, we do request that you also be looking at how you are creating pockets of high density rather than looking beyond. And finally, with all the rain that we've had, please do be considering how you're going to handle the stormwater management at any of these developments with higher density when there are fewer pervious surfaces. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Steph Corey.
My name is Stephanie Corey. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I am the representative for the Redwood Oaks Neighborhood for the city of Redwood City. And, and I've been hearing, as you can imagine, I've been filtering and collecting a lot of feedback on this issue, in particular, twenty-three Oakwood Drive. And I just want to pile on to what everybody has been saying here. We have notoriously terrible drainage, no parking, and substandard streets are streets are actually listed as substandard with the city of Redwood City. And we have been trying to work with the city for, I mean, literally a hundred years, trying to fix these streets and, and create, you know, a better, better roads for all of the high density that we've already got in our city. If you look at a map of Redwood City versus Atherton, the density that is already where you're proposing is, you know, just ridiculous. I mean, the, when you, when you look at the lots that our houses are on versus what the, the houses in Atherton are on, it's just, it's, it's offensive. It's personally offensive to me, and I know it's offensive to the rest of my neighbors that you're trying to put all of your obligations that the state is, you know, foisting upon every city and you're really pushing it to Redwood City. And in fact, it's, it's, you know, in looking at this property, it appears that half of it is actually in Redwood City. So as, as a few of my neighbors have said, we're actually working with our city to understand, in the city's attorney's office, to understand exactly what the jurisdiction is and where these lines are really drawn. And we are going to continue to fight this because I don't think it's fair. I agree with what everybody is saying that, you know, you frankly, this is a monster of your own making, that, that you've fought.
Thirty seconds, ma'am.
Thank you. You fought these, you fought the, what the state has been trying to do for years and years. And now I feel like we are all the ones who are bearing the brunt of this. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
The last hand raised online is Caleb Humm.
Hi there. Thanks for listening to me. My name is Caleb Humm. Can you hear me?
Yep.
I have lived in Menlo Park and moved to Redwood City recently, and I absolutely understand the need for affordable housing. It's a difficult place to live and make it out here. But I do just want to echo the concerns that all of these neighbors have raised. I live on Roble Avenue and we walk the Oakwood Circle daily. And I just, I know, I work in Atherton and the bottleneck to turn onto Selby Lane and to get home on Oakwood, it's dangerous to cross El Camino. There's no sidewalks. It's just a congested crowded place. And I think there are other areas that can maybe solve this problem. So, thank you.
All right, thank you.
I did notice a few other people raised their hands. We had no more cards, so now would be an opportunity if anybody else would like to make a public comment.
Okay. Do you have anybody else online?
No, sir.
Okay, and let's close public comments. So public comments are now closed. It now is back for council discussion and questions. Elizabeth, you had a question?
I did. I wanted to ask some, some good points. Thank you all for all of your comments. And I know that it takes a lot to get out and to stand up and, you know, speak your heart. There are, I believe, some misconceptions. And one of them, I think, and I wanted to ask city manager and Lisa, our planner, a question regarding the access that would be planned for any development along the Gresham properties, that it would be from El Camino and not from the Gresham Street side that the potential new development, if there were, just because it's zoned, does not mean that you have to sell. And you, you all know that, that, that did come through loud and clear. So your homes are your homes for as long as you want to keep them. No one is telling you that you have to sell at all. And so that's, that's something that is clear. No one is saying, this is, this is not eminent domain.
That, that's correct.
It's not. Public comments are closed. Okay, we've closed public comments.
Anyway, the question to the city planner and to staff would be about the access if it was.
If, if there were a development along that section of El Camino, I would strongly suggest that access be granted off of El Camino versus back into a residential neighborhood. That would be the preferred alternative.
And I'll guess I'll just bring it back to council. It was that council's vision also.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, yes, yes.
Can I make a, there seems to be a lot of confusion about what zoning means for properties. Maybe George, you can clarify what that means for property owners in terms of their ability to renovate their house and stay in their house.
Sure, but I might have the city attorney and Lisa jump in as well. As the Councilmember Lewis indicated, there's, the properties would be upzoned, but that doesn't change the underlying opportunity. Is the existing use is residential? That would continue as long as it's used. The town does have a legal non-conforming ordinance in, on the books. So that means that if, under current law, that if someone in a, had a legal non-conforming use, they couldn't expand that legal non-conforming use. They couldn't encroach further, build more, raise it higher, that sort of thing. But the town could develop specific exceptions on these areas to include in that ordinance to allow a certain amount of development to occur. But that would also.
For the individual property owner.
For the individual.
Underlying, current.
Correct. But if the whole project were scraped and the home was demolished, and they were going to build something new, it would be required to be built under the new zoning of the RM twenty zone. Perhaps Mona or Lisa, could you echo or adjust all that?
Yes, I agree with everything that you said, and, and just a little bit more.
Quiet, please, so we can hear the city attorney. Thank you.
To provide a little bit more context, every city in California is required to have a general plan. The general plan is a blueprint for how you want your community to develop over the long run, twenty, thirty, sometimes even longer years. To implement that general plan, there's the adoption of a zoning code. The zoning code is a set of regulations as to what types of uses are permitted, prohibited, conditionally permitted, and regulated. And under those provisions, and again, as a reminder, the housing element, number one, is not being adopted tonight, right? This is just another workshop to discuss it and take direction from the council. But when it goes to the Planning Commission for Review and Recommendation, and then when it comes back to the City Council for Adoption, the housing element contains programs that we would then effectuate through general plan amendments and zoning code amendments, all of which will come back to you again after the adoption of the housing element. And we'll do further environmental analysis when we better understand where we want to align roads to meet the development of those properties, to have the minimal environmental impact, to make, you know, the best neighboring uses and make sure there's overall harmony. And then existing uses that exist up until the date that the zoning code is amendment, is amended, are allowed to continue in perpetuity unless and until they modify it in such a way that they need to, for example, obtain a new building permit. That's the timeframe for which if a property is upzoned, they would have to conform and build in accordance with the new zoning code regulations.
Now, we've, we've closed the public comment. Okay, this is the second time I've asked you not to.
So Lisa, did you want to add anything more to that?
And Mona gave very good explanations, and I don't have anything to add.
Can you address how the legal non-conforming ordinance currently works?
Sure. So currently, if you have what's considered a legally non-conforming structure or a legally non-conforming use, you can continue that in perpetuity as, as indicated. At such time it was demolished, it would need to meet current codes. So if it was rezoned, then at the time the residence was completely demolished, it would need to comply with the new multifamily zoning. But it could continue to exist and you could do repairs and maintenance based on our current zoning code. The town also has the ability to update that code, and we do have some kind of exceptions in the R one A and the R one B zoning districts that you can kind of continue legally non-conforming setbacks. And, and so that the council, after advice from the Planning Commission, could also amend the non-conforming code to allow some continuance of that non-conforming structure if they wish to do so. So that is an option in the future.
Okay, and George, George or Lisa, there's, there was a comment that we were ignoring SB nine applications. Can you give a little clarity to SB nine and where we are on that?
Certainly, there are a good, almost eleven, I think, potentials out there and inquiries from residents about SB nine. A number of them are listed within the housing element document as currently underway in some level of application process, even the tentative parcel map process. And on the current plan, there is above moderate developments of forty-eight new units proposed for SB nine developments or subdivisions throughout town. The SB nine subdivisions are proposed at the above moderate category, which doesn't help the town all that much in meeting the very low and low income categories. But that's where they end up in the plan.
However, include the ADUs that are associated with those lot splits.
Correct, and that's part of the two hundred and eighty number for ADUs is if any of those SB nine lot splits also included ADU, just like any new ADU, they would be counted as part of that. They're not part of the forty-eight. They're in the other column.
I know, but in a whole percentage wise, of our three hundred and forty-eight total units that are being required, if you add forty-eight to two eighty, that's three hundred and twenty-eight units that we're talking about with SB nine and ADUs.
Yes.
So contrary to what has been said, and I know it was said emotionally, and I totally understand, we're not putting the whole housing element on the back of this few parcels along El Camino. And just to say that this was presented to council back in, I think, June is when we first presented our, our ideas and we discussed it this year. And it's all part of public record, and we've been going back and forth and discussing various opportunities.
It actually came up in February.
February.
Of the year prior, I believe.
Oh.
As part of the original staff's big global.
Oh, yes, the perimeter. Yes, yes, yes. So February of twenty twenty-one, staff presented council with a plat map of the entire town and highlighted pretty much all of El Camino, all of Valparaiso.
That's correct. And then there was also a town newsletter that went out to the entire community that kind of highlighted what those, some of those proposals were and that the council had removed the overlay proposals, which was considered for part of this section of El Camino as well. Removed those from it, but in the letter it was noted, or in the newsletter, it was noted that they could be added back at some point, given council discussion around the issues of the housing element over the next year as you move toward submitting something to the state.
This really was not done in the dark of night or without letting people know. I understand, I understand. So, yeah.
Okay, we're not going to be speaking out. Thank you. No, we're not taking public comments. If, if you have any questions, go give them to Anthony and he'll decide whether or not he can bring them forward. Okay, if there's any more discussion, we're going to take a recess now. Okay, we're taking a ten-minute recess.
Did I make a comment?
No, we're taking a recess.
Okay, okay.
Come back at nine o'clock.
We're going to rejoin the session in the next few seconds if we can gather together and get our seats.
What kind of charge do you need?
Gosh, what a beautiful, diverse-looking, wonderful community. All of your spaces, we're all from multiple types of people, colors. For one other.
Starting the meeting again, thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Mayor, before you get started again, there was a comment or a question during the intermission about how the public could email the entire city council at once. That email would also go to Anthony and myself, and we'll make sure it becomes part of the public record. And any communication like that is also posted on the town's website as part of this meeting, if it relates to this meeting or future meetings. So the public can email the council@council, C O U N C I L, at C I dot Atherton dot C A dot U S. And we'll also put that in the chat window of this evening's meeting.
Okay, all right. So we were on council comments. This is where we are. So any other comments we'd like to make?
I have a comment. First, it was hard to hear all this, and I feel my heart goes for all of you. There was at one point that was brought up a couple of times. That's not correct, that I just want to see if I can get people to explain it a little bit better. The prop, I've heard multiple times tonight that we pick these properties because they're small or they're lower income compared to other areas, and that's not correct. The reason it was picked, if from my understanding, and I can have our city council and George talk about it too, is because it's on a high-dense traffic corridor with, there's bus stations there and it's on a high-density traffic area. And the second reason we picked it, it was an and, it is already next to existing density or commercial property. So there were principles that were applied. We didn't just go and pick one specific area. And can you explain that a little bit further, maybe?
Excellent. You did great. When the council looked at properties around town. Excellent. You did great. When the council looked at properties around town, they, they did pay particular attention to, to town's main thoroughfares, he evaluated properties along Bay Road, El Camino, Valparaiso and other areas around town. And with specific attention to areas that had multimodal transit access within a half mile or less, which is El Camino Real and properties that bordered or were adjacent to or across from either denser property or commercial property.
All right, and look, we, we listened to everything y'all said and some of you, well, all of you made excellent points and and I appreciate you taking the time to make the comments. So, but I'd like to let the council finish their discussion, okay? So anybody else?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So I want to, first of all, I want to thank everyone that spoke. You clearly spoke from your heart and, and I heard you. You clearly feel like the rug has been pulled out from under you and you feel disenfranchised by the action. I honestly don't really know what it means to have the, your properties upzoned. It's gonna have a consequence. It's gonna have a, it's clearly got a consequence that you can't tear your house down and rebuild it. That, that, that is a clear consequence, but I don't think that's the issue. It's how you feel about it that's the bigger issue. And I don't know what it does in terms of property values of your properties or the properties that are across the street. I voted against this for two reasons. One, which I've said thirty times, there is absolutely no way to build affordable housing in Atherton when someone has to buy the property. We heard a woman speak this morning or this, this evening about how much three of your properties would cost and how the footprint of those properties was smaller than one property on Middlefield Road that was for sale for quite a bit less than those three properties would cost. There's no way that some developer can buy that land and build affordable housing. Now, you need to understand, this is being driven by the Housing and Community Development Department of California because of decisions made by the California State Legislatures that is forcing on every jurisdiction in California to have to authorize new housing that cannot easily be justified. And for Atherton, it's three hundred and forty eight units. When we started this process and just to clarify the date about when we started it, we started this process in November twenty twenty one, and we've had many, many, many meetings. And I've read every single page of this housing element. And I, there's some problems in this housing element. It characterizes Atherton as ninety seven percent single family home owned, but that doesn't count six hundred students at Menlo College. So throughout it, it just ignores the fact that we've got a very significant number of renters at Menlo College, and it doesn't include them in our, the analysis of who we are as Atherton. This community, I think, is extremely represented, by this community, I mean, all of you in this room that spoke to us tonight, I think are very representative of our community. You've put everything you've got into buying a property in this town because you wanted to enjoy the quality of life that you can enjoy in this town with your neighbors who you clearly know, and you don't want that disrupted. I completely understand that. I feel the same way for myself. I put everything I had to get into the town because I wanted to raise my kids here. And I don't think that there's any way that affordable housing is gonna get built in places of your homes. It can be called multiple family, but it's not gonna be affordable. They're, they're gonna, it's gonna cost some developer millions and millions of dollars to buy that property, as we all know our properties cost now. And it's gonna cost them a lot more to develop it into multifamily. It's not gonna be affordable. So the goals that are attempted be achieved by the state are not gonna be achieved by this. The other reason, and that's one of the reasons I voted against this, the other reason I voted against it is because I knew whoever was gonna be impacted by this would be blindsided. And I said that when we discussed this at the last meeting. And it's just not fair. Now, that's not to say that there hasn't been lots of information about this housing element over the last fourteen months. We, the town has published many, many notices about this, both in the mail and online, but people don't pay attention until it starts to directly impact you. That's the way it works for all of us. We, we, we've had recommendations for doing multifamily housing in many different areas of this town. And every time the one went forward, the people who lived close to it got very upset because it would change their quality of life. It would change the way they feel about living in this town. That's a problem. I don't think it's the right thing to do. I understand that the state's trying to force this on us. I don't think it's the right thing to do. I think the right thing to do and the only way that you're gonna see any kind of affordable housing built in Atherton is if somebody doesn't have to transfer the land. And there are two solutions for that. One, are building ADUs, which is what I've tried to support from the very beginning, notwithstanding that that got shot down by three members of the council earlier today. But the other is to build housing on the school campuses. And the, and we have great need for that housing on the school campuses from staff and from students at Menlo College. And that is where we should be focused and we should be in an argument with the state to try to make that happen because that's the only way affordable housing is gonna get built in Atherton. The, the one exception to that is twenty three Oakwood. And we've had a lot of discussion about twenty three Oakwood. I voted against approving twenty three Oakwood until the council agreed to change it from twenty units an acre to ten units an acre. And we, we've discussed twenty three Oakwood for, I think, about a year now. I don't think it's the best, the right thing for Oakwood. The Oakwood community is a small community. We've heard that. It's not, you know, everybody on Gresham is also a small community. They're not, Gresham, while the backyard of the properties is on El Camino, the front yard of the property and the access to those houses is on El Camino, it's in a small community. So you, you know, this is just a very, very difficult issue and how we best address it. I don't know. The, the problem with twenty three Oakwood is if we don't have a housing element that's approved by the state, then anyone who owns property can develop it without regard to what the rules are, the zoning rules that Atherton has. Those rules are thrown out. That's called a builder's remedy. That is a real serious risk with twenty three Oakwood. It's, it, I'm not aware that it's a risk anywhere else. It's a possible that some developer could come along and buy property and try to develop, but there's some big properties for sale in Atherton and they could be developed into multifamily. They're not gonna be affordable, but they could be developed into multifamily. I believe there's a market for that in Atherton. But it requires a developer to buy the land. They're gonna have to hold the land. There's gonna be some litigation. It's not an easy thing. Twenty three Oakwood, you have an owner that wants to build townhouses on that property. That's a difference. So there's a risk. So in my judgment, it was better to approve ten units for that property than twenty units an acre for that property. You know, that, that's just how I felt about it. And, and I think that's better for the community to have a smaller number of units and a larger number of units. But overall, this is a very, very difficult issue. I do think that the way that Atherton's described in this housing element should include acknowledgement of all of the renters that we have at Menlo College. And that's both faculty and student renters. I think there's about twenty five or thirty faculty renters and there's about six hundred student renters. And I don't think that's included in all the factual presentation in here. The, the one other thing I'll, I'll just note that I, I see several places in here, it continually says that there have only been a hundred and eighty units built in Atherton since two thousand and ten. That would be fifteen units a year. Well, we know from looking at the material that we get every single month that there's somewhere in the high twenties built every year, and most of them include ADUs at this point. So there's gotta be more than an average of fifteen a year. That just doesn't make sense to me. On, 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 on this issue, I, I can't support the way the, the housing element is structured right now, just because I don't think that it's right to force this upzoning on this community. Please don't clap. It, it's my opinion. Everybody's entitled to their own opinions. It's my opinion. I feel really strongly about it, but this is a very hard issue to deal with.
When we vote, you'll hear that. We're on, we're on public, we're on council comments now, okay? Thank you. What next?
No, I'm willing to give how I voted, if you want to hear it. From the very beginning of this, I felt that it's, it's hard to go to each different, any, what we are experiencing here, this is not the first time for us. We've had it with other areas and other neighborhoods. So wherever you go, you're gonna have the same reaction. So and we started off, as things bubbled up, we kind of went and researched them. But from the very beginning, I think we have to have a set of principles of what we're looking at. And if you pull back from the individual neighborhoods, if we have a strategy for how we want the city to develop a long-term vision. And one of that would be if you're gonna build high-density housing, if you're required. Now, again, I'll, none of us want this. It's really hard to do and it's a possible task. But if we, if you are going to do multiple family housing, you need to do it on the high-traffic corridors and you should do it where it's immediately adjacent to density and commercial housing. And that, in my opinion, is why your property's gone on the list in the first place. There, there are more properties that qualify for. There's a lot of big streets on Atherton. And I think that you're right, that with the small ones, this is gonna be a hard one to develop. But if we apply a set of principles and say it's on high den, it's immediately adjacent to density or commercial density and it's on a high-traffic corridor, preferably where there's multimodal transportation, which puts it in a different category. But if we look at that in our town, there are other areas beside yours that would qualify. And some that may be more likely to be developed because they're already bigger lots. So I would like to take that approach, but we're at the twelfth hour. And the, the consequences, I don't think they've been articulated tonight, so maybe someone should complex, should just say what we're facing, which are lawsuits, builder's remedy, and maybe someone who's can articulate better can tell us what we're facing if we don't do it. And if they don't accept what we do and the deadlines for that. So can George or Lisa or Mona, someone kind of summarize what the penalties are if we don't have our thing approved?
Mr. Mayor, is that gonna do that?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, okay, so the, the housing element is required and Mona certainly jumped in as well. The housing element is required to be submitted by January thirty first, submitted, adopted by the agency and submitted to the state for certification. That, that clock actually also starts the potential for a builder's remedy submission. That can be submitted as of February first because after January thirty first, there, the town was, the town's current housing element is no longer valid. We've submitted something to the state, but there is the potential that we don't get that certified and a builder's remedy could be submitted on that. A builder's remedy, as Councilmember DeGolli indicated, is an opportunity for a property owner to submit an entitlement to the town. And that entitlement or that plan for development doesn't have to be constrained by the town's current land use controls and zoning law. And they could propose a very high-density development on a single-family parcel of an acre or less or, or whatever they own or want. And the town is required to consider approval of that. The only thing we could ministerially approval. The only thing we could use to mitigate the impact of that is SEQA. But SEQA is a delay, not a, not a denial. So we could mitigate the impact of that development, but it goes beyond whatever the town's land use zoning standards are. If the town, another potential issue is if the town does not obtain a certified housing element from the state, we are subject to penalty from the state, all the way from a hundred thousand dollars a month to six hundred thousand dollars per month for an uncertified housing element if we continue to not move forward towards certification. We're also subject to lawsuits from developers. We're also subject to lawsuits from housing advocates, all beginning from the time that the town does not have a certified housing element. Mona, anything else to add to that?
Yeah, it's just one other, yeah, one other remedy, and this is probably the worst one beyond financial consequences.
Right.
Penalties, which is a court could take the town's land use and planning authority away from it. And now the state will be planning and zoning what Atherton looks like. And neither the planning commission nor the town council will have that authority anymore.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mona. Thank you, George. So, so, you know, just many of you said, hey, you know, we're surprised about all this. It was the first time we ever heard about this, et cetera. As, you know, as Rick pointed out, we've been discussing this for well over a year. We had a big session at, at the park and, you know, invited everyone to come and to give their input as to where they would build high-density housing. And for the most part, no one put anything down. You know, when we first were moving forward with potential locations, I got, you know, close to four hundred letters. I answered every darn one of them. And in my response, I asked them, where would they put it? Okay, and you have many of them, it was anywhere but here. But there were two locations that came up quite regularly and one was Oakwood and the other one was ECR. So, so that's, so that's, that's where we are with, with that. Now, you know, as George pointed out, there's lots of penalties for not getting something in. And, you know, we've had several, many, many meetings, even this year, including neighborhood meetings that have been almost in every location where people could have gone. One was at Zach's house. And, but there were other ones around town. In fact, there was an open meeting that was at Menlo College. Some of you attended. Not all of you, but, but we've tried to make sure people knew what we were doing and we've talked about the housing element, you know, ad nauseam. So, you know, right now, you know, it's up to five people to make the decision. And right now, it's up to five people to decide, you know, are we going to subject the, the town to state's remedies or are we not? Now, we already submitted a housing element, which we all voted for, to say, let's just rely on pushing the college to take more and more units and to just build ADUs. So we've already gone down that route. And the response came back, we want you to rezone part of your town for multifamily. They said, we're not going to accept that. And they said, the housing at the college doesn't meet the criteria for housing, you know, different diversities because you have to be a student or a faculty member or staff member at that college to use that housing. So while we have identified, and I've read every line and every word in the housing element several times, we have continued to point out that they just built a new, you know, dorm that housed over two hundred people. And that we've been talking to the, to the college president about building new units that, you know, they would like, obviously, they would like funding for so that they could house, you know, potentially for a new program, students for a new program as well as new faculty members. Of course, that's all, you know, all this has to happen in eight years. So we need locations where, for example, like in, on Oakwood, where somebody wants to do it now. And they've indicated they want to do it now because we have to make progress according to our plan every year. And if we don't, then the housing department is going to come back and then put more requirements on us. Now, as, as Rick accurately pointed out, this came from Sacramento. And was approved by people who are representing. And was approved by people who were representing Atherton, by the way. I don't know who you voted for. Okay? But some of those people, maybe you voted for, you know, put this upon us. Okay? And there's more coming. So the, the state is, you know, hell-bent for getting things going about housing and diversity and everything. And so, you know, this is just the tip of the iceberg, what we're trying to work with. And we've been wrestling with it for quite a while. And, and many of our meetings had nobody here except Stephanie and Tom. Well, it's been in the papers. Okay, yeah. And all, we all are too. But, okay, all right, we're just not going to yell out in this meeting, okay? There's not a free-for-all. So, you know, this is a hard decision for all of us. And, you know, we'll have to make a decision in the next few minutes. So I'll move on to other council members.
Well, there's no decision-making this evening, but
Well, we have to make a recommendation. Yeah, what we're going to
Do you want to make any changes or adjustments, or you don't have to do anything this evening?
Yeah.
Because it'll move on to the next step.
Right.
But one thing I did want to mention that Councilmember DeGolia and you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, was the annual reporting that's required as part of that eight-year cycle and our accessory dwelling unit program. So if, for example, Menlo College doesn't end up developing what it develops over that eight-year cycle, that would be a shame. But also if there's no development that actually happens on El Camino Real, even though we have upzoned it. But we have a very, very successful accessory dwelling unit program where people build the accessory dwelling units, they rent them, they report that they're renting them at low and very low income levels, they report that to the town. They participate in a hip housing program where they can find renters and tenants, or they participate in renter-attended options through Menlo College or Menlo School for teachers and faculty and other things, and report that to the town. We can report that to the state. And if we're filling in those buckets of the very low and the low-income category, which are going to be the harder ones to do, it takes a whole lot of pressure off some of that other development requirement.
Right. Okay, so first is making a plan and that's realistic and it passes their muster. And secondly, is getting people to fulfill the requirements that we have, no matter where it is.
Right. We still have to have that approvable plan.
Yes.
And I think the
Okay, Rick.
Three things. One, first a question. George, you said that the builder's remedy could be filed on February 1st. I thought that if we self-certify, which the state law allows us to do on January 31st, that there can't, the builder's remedy can't be filed until the state makes a, the state housing department makes a judgment that we're not qualified. And that's, and they have 90 days to make that judgment.
No. So, and Mona, jump in if I'm incorrect in this answer, but the, the town will adopt and self-certify, make findings and submit that to the state. But the builder's remedy could occur at that point, because we don't have a state-certified housing element. We have a locally-certified housing element. So somebody could submit the builder's remedy and we would have a colorable argument that says, we believe our housing element does meet the state requirements. So the, the, the comment was that it's unlikely we will get a builder's remedy until after that 60-day review process from the state comes back and the state says, you don't have a certified housing element. Mona, anything else to add or?
I agree. I think that as soon, as long as we make our January 31st deadline, HCD has 60 days thereafter to respond and either certify our housing element or find further comments. So during that 60-day window, I think that we are okay. It's just what happens after the 60th, 61st day. I just need some clarification about that.
Two other, two other points. Uh, one was the, the housing element currently says that the upzoning on Saballo and Gresham would allow a four-story buildings. I don't think we approved four-story buildings.
You didn't. You still actually have to approve what that development looks like, and it could be less than four stories. You've got to develop those standards.
Well, but the housing element says four stories in a couple of different places. So I think that's an error. And, and then finally, my third point, what you described is exactly right in terms of if we, we've got an obligation to follow our housing that we say we're going to, that we've zoned for and we say will be built, we, we're, we're not involved in building it, but if it doesn't get built, then we've got to make some adjustments. And if it gets built, because there's more ADUs that get built and rented than we anticipated, then that may be able, that would satisfy us. I understand that. But the problem is, it doesn't help the residents where you, we've actually upzoned their property. We haven't given them an overlay. If we gave them an overlay, which is what we initially discussed when we talked about this multifamily housing, then, then they could build a single-family house. They, they wouldn't be prohibited from that. But if you upzone it, like
That, that, that's correct.
Then that upzoning stays with those residents, even though it's ADUs that end up satisfying our obligations to the state.
Right. It does preclude that, but the, the comments we received back from HCD and from the planning consultants is that they don't, they don't lend as much credibility to the potential for development of an overlay versus an upzoning. An upzoning pushes the development in that direction, whereas an overlay is noncommittal, in their opinion.
I, I think that they're gonna not give much credibility to multifamily development in Atherton at all, because they're going to see that there's, there's going to be a petition saying people don't want to do it. So there, you're, you're going to see that, that they're, they're not going to be able to count on it at all. And this, I'd much rather see overlay zoning than upzoning, because it doesn't put them in a box.
Wha- what if we were to do overlay, but then expand, extend it farther along the, the corridors? So now we're not just picking, so there's more possibility, if you know what I'm saying. So if we say we do it all along the El Camino, now we, and then do it as an overlay and, and the other main corridors that have multimodal transportation corridors.
Well, I mean, you certainly could do something like that, but you're, you could extend the entirety of El Camino Real with an overlay zone for any single-family residential property that backs up to El Camino or Half Mile and, or however you want to do that. But it, the state could come back. And as was mentioned in the audience, what's the plan B? If, if, if the, if the state comes back and says the overlay zoning's not sufficient, you need to do more. Now you've got overlay zoning that doesn't meet it. And now you've still got to develop affordable housing opportunities elsewhere in town through potential rezoning. So one of the things that came up during many of these community meetings and was mentioned by the council this evening, is, is some sort of long-term vision for, for the town. And, and so I would suggest after we figure out what we're going to submit to the state, that we start to develop some sort of community engagement committee, appointed by the council for a formal committee, subcommittee of the council, standing committee, public meetings, et cetera, that works over the next several years potentially to develop what the vision for this town is, where that multifamily is going to go if we need to do it, wha- what that looks like. Help us develop those development standards that we need to apply for the multifamily and engage the community in that process. It's going to take a while. Because I, I mean, I guarantee you, we're going to be back here again in eight years.
I just want, I just want to respond to the city manager or add on to what you're just saying, because let's put it in perspective. The housing element is every eight years. It started in 1961. Okay, that's when they started doing these housing elements. I've been through, this is my third one being on council. Last housing element, we were required 91, 94, 94 units, okay? The uni, the one before that, eight years, I think it was 63 or something like that. To have them come up and tell us 348 new units with so many, 144 being very low and low income. There, it's just mind-boggling. We just, you know, where does it come from? From where does it come? And we thought in the very beginning that there was a resident that wanted to take four to five acres along a pretty busy street and develop it. When it got wind, her neighbors, you know, just, and she shut it down. Okay, it was a willing owner, willing, ready to do it. And then there was other larger, same thing. So, I mean, our backs are against the wall, but I just wanted to put in perspective how this is going to, and why we need that long-term vision, because who's, what's going to, what are they going to do in the next eight-year cycle? Okay? From 94 to 348 for Atherton, that we're just not made for that kind of development. So anyway, so, um, yeah.
Anything else?
It was a, a single owner, was a single owner.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Okay, we're not going to be speaking out. We've had public comments. Let us finish. Thanks.
Okay. Um, well, um, this is my third council meeting as a council member, so this is a fun start. I will say I voted for the El Camino because of its proximity to transit and its proximity to retail means that it's would, it's appropriate for multifamily. That said, I would like some clarity from staff on what it means, because the lots are so small. There was a lot of discussion in our meeting about like the administrative rules and the rules required to have this pass muster by HCD. And what I don't want to do is have us do this and then have it not have HCD dis- dismiss it because of the lot size. So I would like to understand that process a little bit more.
So the, if, if the lots are less than, Lisa, correct me if I'm wrong, one, one-acre lots, if they're less than one-acre lot, the state is going to require that the town
Half-acre.
Half-acre, sorry. That the state's going to require that the town also have a companion ordinance that encourages lot consolidation. Even with that, that's not a guarantee that the state would accept that as an acceptable solution. The one thing they do provide is if the town upzones or zones something at 20 units per acre, whatever it is, that half-acre or above, they count that as affordable. Doesn't matter. They don't look at the lot price. They don't look at anything. They just say that's an affordable density for zoning. You can count that in your housing element. The one at 23 Oakwood was, is zoned at 10 units per acre. It's proposed to be zoned at 10 units per acre. We can't count that as affordable, unless we also have an inclusionary ordinance that requires that development to provide 20% of its development, whatever its development potential is. 20% of those units have to be restricted as affordable units. So that's why we're able to count some of that as well.
Can I ask a question? Lisa, when we first started this process, you gave us a presentation, which was all based on overlays and included the whole El Camino Real. And why did we not get that? And why has that gone off the table? And is, is that comparable or better than doing a smaller one that is upzoned as opposed to an overlay?
Um, right. So as the city manager indicated, there's some concern with the, the overlay concept, because the higher and better use may indeed be the retention of that single-family home. And so I think HCD is more supportive of a rezone scenario than the overlay scenario.
But you originally proposed that. That's what we started talking about, but it was a bigger area.
It was multiple properties, correct.
And, and council kind of pushed back on that, like, oh my God, what are we doing? We can't do that. We can't do that. I mean, seriously, and so, I mean, we've just, go ahead.
Well, there's also just been a lot more comment letters and reviews since our kind of initial conversations on the housing element a year ago. And so we're a little better informed now on what HCD's comments are and what they're looking for, based on their reviews of other jurisdictions.
Yeah. To that, to that end, HCD considers the development of properties that are possible, but not required to be included in the housing element. So what do I mean by that? Things like SB9 units, the development of ADUs and overlays. Those are all options, but they're not required. So HCD puts less weight into using those to factor in compliance with your RENA numbers, unless you can demonstrate with some sort of substantial evidence in the record in the housing element, that you have ways that development is actually going to occur, which is why the city manager harps back to if you have an ADU, if you plan on constructing an ADU and, and certainly renting it to low-income or lower-income, let us know, because that is substantial evidence that we would then show HCD that we're complying with this obligation through ADUs. Same with overlays. Initially, there was, I think, some thought that there would be interest in developing those properties until we got the feedback from members of the public that that was no longer a viable option. And then just to respond to one other point about the smaller lots, anything under 0.5 acres, HCD presumes that that's not viable for the development of the lower-income household properties. Unless the housing element includes sufficient programs to incentivize the consolidation or programs that address how that occur. So in May of 2020, HCD issued a bulletin that talks about ways that we can do that. The draft housing element before you talks about including a program that would incentivize and help assist with consolidation. So that is one aspect of how we would respond to the smaller lot sizes.
Can I ask a procedural question? If we submit the plan that we submit today, and then we do have by miracle, all, everybody steps forward and makes a whole bunch of low-income ADUs and we meet our numbers, can we remove something that we put in? Or once it's in, it's in? Can we revisit?
We can always rezone.
So we could, we could put this in for now, and then if we can't, then when we have our bigger theory, so I'm just asking.
You wouldn't, if you were to remove it, you would need to designate sites elsewhere to accommodate that. Yeah.
What, to be clear, what you're saying is that we need to have multifamily. So it has to be a place of specifically multifamily. If we were to get, as Rick was saying, to get our numbers from ADUs, let's just hypothetically say we did, could we then get away, or is it specifically required to be multifamily?
We, we are required to have multifamily zoning.
But we do have it, but it's not inclusionary, because it's the schools.
So it has to be somewhere else in town. And that's where 23 Oakwood comes in handy at, you know, RM10. But they're going to require more in order to satisfy the element. But I think what you're essentially asking is if we submit the housing element with the RM20 zones along El Camino Real and be upzoned them as we go, but we're meeting the requirements of the state mandate through ADUs or some other mechanism, can we undo that? And, and, and the answer that Lisa articulated and City Attorney can opine as well, I think she's got a different slight perspective, is, is you could, but you need to rezone somewhere else at, you know, the required element to satisfy the state. Mona?
I, I completely agree with what Lisa said. And the reason for this is because the legislature also adopted a couple of years ago in 2019, Senate Bill 330. It was called the Housing Crisis Act. And that's the piece of legislation that says that you are prohibited from downzoning property until that legislation sunsets and the, and the legislature actually extended that. So basically, if we were to take the upzoning out of the zoning code and eliminate it from the properties that go, go up to Redwood City, we would then need to find another property to make that difference up. So we can't just remove those number of units. We have to find another place to, to put them.
But let me ask, let me ask a, a more detailed question of Mona and Lisa. So let's say, for example, the town by a miracle of some kind does get a certified housing element in its current format. And so the state says, that's great. You've got a certified housing element. We meet that 120-day deadline to have that. So that means we have three years to complete the rezoning or upzoning process. And so over those three years, there's a very strong commitment to accessory dwelling units. We're reporting to the state that we're doing that. And we've also identified other sites that might be opportunity sites for development over that period of time. The council has another conversation around the Gilmore House and things become to fruition and some other opportunities. The council has another conversation around the Gilmore House, and things become to fruition and some other opportunities. And so we add those into the plan or into the mix, and we still have not pulled the trigger on El Camino Real in that three-year window, but we've added those other opportunities. We we can have conversations with the state during this process, so long as we're meeting the numbers and addressing the issues that maybe at that point, we don't have to rezone those properties, and we could consider them as overlays, or we could consider them as something less. Is that?
From a.
I mean, it's pie in the sky, but it's.
Yeah, I mean, from a practical perspective, um in speaking with other attorneys who are working with HCD, um, HCD has been more amenable to allowing um certain trade-offs, assuming that you can meet your RENA obligations. So on the one hand, maybe, but on the other hand, like I said, SB three thirty is a separate but but related law that says that if you downzone one property, you cannot um you have to, you have to plan for it in another area. So like you mentioned, if we don't um zone the properties that are for consideration tonight, but then we upzone the Gilmore House or other locations, that would be fine, because because um that would meet both of our RENA numbers, plus we wouldn't be in violation of SB three thirty.
So.
All right, let's go on.
So, all right, what I was gonna say is, as the next step beyond this, as everyone probably agrees, is to come up with a set of criteria and a vision for the city. So if we pass something tonight, if we go through those meetings and we're able to come up with other creative su- solutions, I happen to like the Gilmore House solution, but it's only a small one, so there needs to be other ones. And there's other things that are on our map that come forward that we don't have at this moment right now. And then that's part of our vision, so it's not picking and choosing, but we're doing our vision. But as we sit here right now, we're weighing the risk of submitting something and not having it be accepted. And if it's not accepted, we really get penalized. So it's not just fines, we lose our control, so all the things everyone fears will be the worst things could happen. We're at least trying to control the development, so we could lose our ability to control. So I'd like to see us come up with something we think's gonna work, but then realize that we can change it.
Keep working on it, right?
They're not gonna approve it no matter what.
Right.
They're not gonna approve it.
So, yeah.
So what, and if you upzone, if you upzone Gresham and Sabala, th- then we're stuck with that, then we have a really hard time.
So let's talk about the penalties, because I I'm not saying we we don't, maybe we're, let's have a difference discussion. This is another hard one to have in public. But what if we were to not submit it, and we were to we were to collectively agree, we're gonna accept this, you know, up to, what is it? Six hundred thousand dollars a month, will the city be bankrupted? How long? And let's talk about if we don't do it.
I don't think you want to have that conversation at the public, in a public forum about.
They don't allow.
Particularly with the state, uh you you don't want to tell the state right now, we have no intent of complying with the law, we're gonna take the.
No, I'm saying the citizens are telling us that.
I understand.
So I want us to explain to them why we don't, we don't want to do that, because the penalty of not having something that passes right now is worse than everything that's on the table right now. That's what I'm saying.
I I'm just gonna reiterate that. I and I just want to reiterate that the absolute worst penalty.
We can't have an extension.
Mona?
Right, so beyond any financial penalty, you can have a very wealthy community pool together its residents and say, we will collectively pay all the penalties, we will pay all the fines, we don't need grant funding from the state for anything, which, by the way, the town does receive um CDBG grant funds, not extensively, but we do. Let's just assume we don't want that. The ultimate penalty, and this is why the state adopted this, is the fact that they can take away your land use and planning powers. And that's, that is the big stick in all of this.
Wait, let me ask a question, Mona. Have they done that for any of the jurisdictions in San Diego County that were supposed to be approved in March twenty twenty-one?
My understanding is that many, actually, I believe all of the jurisdictions are continuing to work with HCD. They're not there yet. I would need to do additional research to see what, if any of them have have had their um powers pulled.
Right, but so that that's the reason we should be very clear that we absolutely intend to comply with HCD, and we intend to submit uh at some point, a through our discussions with them, and a qualified housing element. We, nobody, nobody doesn't want that, but there's these communities that are way ahead of us. Uh, the LA and Orange County communities are fifteen and a half months ahead of us, and the San Diego communities are, they're almost two years out now, uh that since they were supposed to be qualified. We've got a long ti- this is a marathon.
Yeah.
We're at the very beginning, and we should attempt to comply with it, but that doesn't mean we have to upzone our neighborhoods.
Okay, so I have a, I have a.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I have a question. What happens if um the lawsuits uh that are being waged um by cities uh in the Southland to uh overturn SB nine? They have sued, there's four cities in uh Southern California, um uh they have filed suit uh to overturn Senate Bill nine.
Well, there's also lawsuits uh challenging the RENA numbers.
Yes, but, okay.
I think there are two suits.
Are have they, have they actually been filed?
Yeah, they lost, and they're being, they're on appeal.
Okay, yeah, okay, so, but those are, those were charter cities, they were not, we're a general law city. Uh, but in, I mean, just hypothetically, what happens if SB nine is overturned? We are banking on SB nine really, really heavily to lot split and develop little ADUs all over town. It's gonna be like measles and chickenpox. It, that is gonna change the character of our town forever with that, with all that little stuff. So I just, you know, I think SB nine is a really bad law.
Yeah, I do too.
Don't you think? I mean, it's very complicated, and it's really gonna destroy a lot of our communities with all the lot splits. So that's my final comment. I'm not gonna say anything more.
Mr. Mayor, there's, there is no uh decision-making this evening, as mentioned.
Can we clarify, we're having people ask us about the Gilmore House and the the park. So can someone explain to the people here about the park?
Better finish asking the questions.
About the park?
Yes, there's a few people here asking about the park. We don't own the park outright, so can someone explain why that we do have the Gilroy? There is a possibility, and believe me, I'm in favor of this one, as you know. There's a possibility it can be developed, uh because it's a like-for-like, because it's, we're not taking from the actual park. But with, on the other hand, that's not a guarantee either, but one other.
A small number.
It's also very small.
I mean, like maybe six units.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, so it's 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 insignificant. I don't even know why we're talking about it.
Stephanie.
Please.
I, can I finish my point? Can I finish the point I was gonna make, which is a different one? So we have a bunch of people who are very angry. One of the things we can do is we can buy a piece of property, the city, the residents can buy a piece of property and donate it. The park was a piece of property that was, that someone donated to the city. So what if we were to find someone who wants to pick a spot, donate a property, or we collectively raise a tax or a bond or something like that? We get a property and we develop something that takes off all the checkpoints, senior citizen, handicapped, uh open to the public, and that we all carry the burden. The problem is, we can't do that pipe dream in the window that we have right now. So all we can do right now is submit what we can submit. We have been, there's nobody stepped forward to give us property. I I haven't seen it, we've been on it for a year.
That don't.
We. No, I hear what you're saying, but it didn't play out that way, and I know I'm not supposed to respond back to you like-for-like. It didn't play out, those people withdrew their offers, okay?
With regards to buying property.
We need to have the council have the conversation. I'd hate to take another recess, so please let them finish their dialogue.
With regards to buying property, a former council member, Mr. Polito, he's got his hand up, but he missed the public comments. Suggested that the town buy some properties, okay? And I I agree that we've talked about, and it's in our housing element, that we will add a fee on top of, but we haven't voted on it and haven't discussed it. But when we look at the fees, we could add a fee on, an impact fee that we would add on top of all building requests and allocate that money towards helping us build affordable housing, which I thought was an excellent idea, except for we just don't have the money to do it now. We've just had a bunch of flooding, and we need to take care of that, that plus some other things that we already have underway. But he came up with a great idea, and I appreciate that, and I think it was a good idea, and we should move forward on that as we get to developing the fees, etc. Okay, so that's one thing that we can do, and I know that we've said that in our in our plan, and that's a very positive thing. But we've given direction, I think, to the council, okay, was just to review this, which I think we've done. Right, have you gotten everything you want out of that?
We received fe- adequate feedback from the council, lots of public comment, that's what this meeting's about.
Right. Okay, and then so the next meeting on this is Thursday tomorrow with the Planning Commission right here. At what, seven o'clock or six o'clock?
I believe the Planning Commission meets at six o'clock.
But it's just the plan, it's not a joint meeting.
No, it's not a joint meeting, it's just the Planning Commission, they have an opportunity to uh do their review of this and make a recommendation to the council, and they may recommend approval, denial, whatever, uh to the council. But it's the council's obligation on January, and after, well, after tomorrow night's meeting, tonight's meeting, there shouldn't be any more substant- substantive changes to the document, because we've got to do a seven-day noticing requirement before your meeting on January thirty-first at two P M., which is the time where the council will, uh, well, maybe we can clarify the time here. But um the ti- the time where the council will adopt the findings and adopt the housing element and submit it to the state. That's the deadline date, two P M. January thirty-first, which is a Tuesday.
Yes.
I know you have two council members that are gonna be on their way to um or arriving in a conference, so they'll have a location once they get there.
League of Cities.
Yeah, oh, is that right?
The League of Cities.
Yeah. All right, okay, do I have a recommendation for adjournment?
Move to adjourn.
To tomorrow, the.
We already had public comment.
There's a, there's a final public comment period at the end of the agenda.
We'll have public comment here at the end of the meeting, so comments.
Not on the agenda.
All right.
For me, items not.
That's correct.
These are again for items not on the agenda.
This is the same public comment period as what was was at the beginning of the meeting, but.
Actually, actually, just just for clarification, we had public comments not on the agenda item, then we had public comments on each agenda. This is only if the council directed future agenda items, and then the public had an opportunity to comment on that. We don't have any future agenda items tonight.
So there's no public comment.
Correct.
It was up there on the agenda, though.
No need for public comment.
Mona, there is an item listed as public comment.
I see that, I see that, that's for, that's in response, if the council had any future agenda item requests that they wish to discuss, at that point, the public could have responded to that.
Oh, gotcha.
All right. They've taken public comment at council meetings that's on anything anybody wants to give comment on, usually Greg Conlon gives that comment.
Okay, uh, yeah, it's for items that are typically not on the agenda, but that's the way the agendas are typically written. It's also pleasure of the council sometimes, we just don't encourage that, because we end up here until midnight.
I, I'm not an advocate for that.
Okay, so uh as far as council comments, um I put out the the assignments for committees and boards and things like that. If you have a problem with any of those, please contact me, and we'll see. George and I will work together to try and get something that that supports your your needs, okay? However, we did try and distribute uh the uh the assignment, so everybody had a committee, and then we distributed out the board opportunities, and obviously, you know, we'd already assigned the um uh the centennial uh subgroup, so. Tried to make a meeting, and I guess there's motion to adjourn or no.
Mr. Mayor, before you go, I do want to ask, has, under future agenda items, has the Centennial Committee Subcommittee met?
Well, we wanted to get rid of, get we get get past a couple of things.
We've talked about.
We have, we've talked.
You've talked about.
You've gotten a text suggesting.
And I and I and I texted you back.
Okay, so I can see that the they've been very busy, obviously, and so.
This has taken the precedent, actually.
Would you like me, though, that my question really is, would you like me to add that to the February regular agenda, so you can report out?
Let's be ready to talk about it.
Absolutely, February is.
Because we we do need to.
Yeah, no, we need to.
It'll be fully vetted by then.
Okay, all right. All right, well.
Move to adjourn.
Okay, second, and buddy?
Yep.
Okay, all right, thank you.
But um, yeah, was I the only one who got it?